Let us reconvene and the next next item is the second reading of ordinance number 2203 adopting municipal code amendments to title one general provisions to improve process efficiency by adopting best practices readability and internal consistency. Application number MCH 202001 applicant city of Cupertino so can we have a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading.
Well, right, that's true. We don't need a staff report. I'm sorry.
Right, so we don't have a staff report, but we have you answer questions if we have any. Thank you.
We have one speaker for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we do. Okay, um, hold on. Let me go to that screen. Um, to attendees and who is it? It is Peggy Griffin. Welcome Peggy.
Hello, can you can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you. I apologize for not realizing that this code change covered what it covered. And so I ignored it on the first reading. To catch up, I did watch the May 5th first reading video with Philip Wilcom and Pugh Gosh. And I would like three questions answered clarified regarding the changes to our laws. If a development project is approved in exchange for public retail, BMR, access to amenities, et cetera. What mechanisms are in place to ensure these promised items come to fruition? How does the city enforce the continued availability of promised items even across changing changes of ownership and management? And what and how are the penalties administered relative to this law? I feel like somewhere in there they're there, but I can't tell. Thank you.
Great. So maybe we can have the staff respond. I understand where Peggy's coming from. We've seen in the past. Things that did not come to fruition, even though they were promised. And I'd love to hear a good explanation of this.
Yeah, I believe Pugh was here at the last meeting. If he's still here, if you could take a moment to just address that really quickly, I appreciate it.
Sure. So the changes that happened with title one don't necessarily have to do with what Peggy is what Ms. Griffin is asking at this point. Though the conditions of approval of a project are already declared a violation in title 19. So that's a separate section of the municipal code. If there are any violations of conditions of approval, there are declared violations there. And as a result, you end up with a code enforcement in title one as a result of that. So if somebody does violate a condition of approval, the city has several avenues, including leading all the way up to revocation of use permits or permits in general. But also with code enforcement to make sure that those particular items are adhered to.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no one else wishing to speak, Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the second reading?
Certainly. This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 20-2203 MCA 20 20-001 ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending chapter 1.04 general provisions, chapter 1.08 right of entry for inspection, chapter 1.09 nuisance abatement, chapter 1.10 administrative citations, fines and penalties, and chapter 1.12 general penalty to improve process efficiency by adopting best practices, readability and internal consistency.
Great. Um, so let's see, I guess you just need to conduct the roll call vote now.
Uh, sorry, I don't think the answer was Peggy's questions were answered. So I think the staff answered that if there is a conditions of approval and that's violated, it's at it's considered a code violation. They get like $100 fine or something. But then I think her question is if a developer project is approved in exchange for public retail, BMR, access to amenities and so on. What mechanisms are in place to ensure these promised items are come to fruition? So our is the answer that we have to put all these conditions in conditions of approval so that we may find them in violation later. And so it's question two, how does the city enforce continued availability of the promised items? And so this will be by complaint only, I guess. Or could possibly there be an annual report so that there is a continued monitor of whether they are delivering what they promised. And what and how are penalties administered? I guess the penalties, I remember last time. It were similar to any violation and even regardless of the size of the project.
Right. So with regard to particular things such as availability of retail as an example, yes, those are complaint driven, though to the extent that BMR housing is another one of the items that I noticed on Peggy's list. Those are run through the city's BMR program. So there's continuous monitoring for that. Um, so there it just depends on the kind of item that is promised. There's certain things that are conditions of approval. Including the, for example, the availability of certain amenities or things like that. If it's part of a project description. And if that's the project description that we relied on in order to approve a project. And that is not something that is being provided as a result of operations of the developer. Then that is something that the city can act upon.
So how how can the city act upon?
It all code enforcement in the city is complaint driven. So that would be the mechanism of acting upon.
Someone will complain, then it will be a code violation of how much dollars which which.
So it depends. The we mentioned this before, our goal is to achieve compliance and not necessarily find people. This is not a source of revenue for the city. So we first trying to make sure that people comply with whatever the requirement is and they're given adequate time to comply with that particular requirement. If they do not comply with it, depending on the type of violation, there's a schedule of fines that we charge. And so the first time somebody receives a citation for non building code violations, non building code and safety violations, it's $100. If which then allows you to get additional time to fix that particular violation. If you do not fix it in that timeframe again, then you would might get a second violation, which is, I believe, a $200 fine for that particular for a violation.
Right. I think we went through all of this in the last meeting extensively.
I think I think the question is really, for example, for BMR and it's approved the way the project, but not built. Not only the administration is not built, then what kind of condition it violates? What what the city's recourse is there?
Build. The project occupancy would be held up.
It has to be built, right? You can't get a certificate of occupancy.
The conditions of approval must specify that their occupancy for the rest of the project must be dependent on the BMR units.
Correct. And we have a standard condition of approval for BMR, our BRIM BMR program, which says that you have to comply with the city's BMR program contingent upon occupancy.
No, I mean, the other part of the project must be contingent upon the BMR being built, right?
Okay.
That's right. Yeah. By the way, the table of fines and penalties that we developed is posted to the website.
Oh, great.
Okay, great. So Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the second reading? Well, I think you already did. So.
I need a mover and a seconder for reading it.
Okay, yeah, I move for the reading. Can someone second the reading?
Second.
Okay, conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So now we make a motion to enact an ordinance number 202203 MCA 202001 ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending chapter 104 general provisions, chapter 108 right of entry for inspection, chapter 109 nuisance abatement, chapter 110 administrative citations. Fines and penalties in chapter 12 general penalty improved process efficiency by adopting best practices, readability and internal consistency. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
All right, who was who moved for that?
I moved. I the mayor moved and Rod seconded.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Let's see. Um, okay, now we're on to public hearings. Item 24 206808 Cupertino BMR housing program update below market rate residential housing and commercial linkage fees update and recommendations discussion of related housing sections included solutions including opportunities to increase housing supply for extremely low income households and approaches to encourage BMR housing production by non residential land uses application number CP 201901 applicant city of Cupertino location citywide. So now can we have the public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, director of community development. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. As you recall, this item was brought to you and council directive staff over last September last year to come back with additional information. And that's why we are here. We have done some extensive research and coordination with our consultants. And we're back with some responsive for you and some proposed recommended actions. With us tonight, we have from the staff level, we have Carrie Huesler, our housing manager, we have Eric Serrano, senior planner from the planning division. We also have all the consultants with us as well. Both Erica and and Carrie will be presenting this item with a little more details describing how we have addressed your your concerns and the questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Carrie and Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a follow up. We're returning from the September 2019 study session. We will have a presentation this evening from Barb Kautz with Goldfarb Littman and Sujata Srivastava from Strategic Economics. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Barb. Unmute Barb.
Barb, are you there?
He's working on it. You gotta unmute. There you go.
Now can you hear me?
Yes, great.
Anyway, thanks Mayor Sheriff and council members. I'm going to do some screen sharing and show a PowerPoint. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the city's so this proposal is to make a change in the city's BMR program to increase the BMR requirements for ownership housing and to increase the and to increase the something happened there. Anyway, to increase the fees. Sorry, guys.
Right, increase the linkage fees, right?
Yeah, increase the linkage phase. Sorry, my PowerPoint disappeared from my screen, which I don't quite understand. Um, let me start over again here.
Yeah, we saw it, even the.
You saw it. All right. So anyway, this is the city's existing BMR housing program. So the housing element actually is has a fair amount of detail about what the city's housing strategy will be. Talks about having at least 15% below market rate units, which we call BMR for for sale and rental units. Then the city has a very short BMR ordinance which authorizes the city to adopt detailed guidelines. And those are all very specific requirements which are in the city's housing mitigation manual. And tonight we have changes in the housing mitigation manual to basically reflect the changes that are being made in the program. So the existing program, as I mentioned, reserves for new residential development of seven or more units. It reserves 15% of the total units for the BMR program. And for the ownership units for for sale units, half of those have to be median income units, which are affordable to people making the median income and half are affordable to moderate income households who make 120% of the median income. For rental units, 60% have to be affordable to very low income households earning 50% of median or less. And low income units to 40% to low income households who make 80% of median or less. And the next slide shows shows the income limits which HCD has just put out and show that the idea of low income and moderate income in Santa Clara County actually involves quite high salaries. For a four person household in Santa Clara County is considered to be extremely low income if they earn less than 47,000 a year. And a moderate income household is a four person household who earns 169 about 170,000 a year or less. So in many parts of the country, none of these would be considered that low income, but it just talks about what the housing prices and what the incomes are in Santa Clara County. I thought about this as I looked at it about, we don't know what effect COVID has had on these income levels. But in any case, these were the income levels that HCD saw when they published this on April 30th. So so the the program for the for residential is primarily onsite units for any project that has seven or more units. Either onsite or there has to be an alternative that actually involves the construction of housing such as such as an offsite or possibly land donation. So the city also though adopted what they called mitigation fees following a 2015 nexus study. And in the case of commercial development, there's no onsite requirement, but they're required to pay what are called commercial linkage fees, which are impact fees. Which I'll explain in a bit. And currently they're about a little over $24 a square foot for offices. And 12 little over $12 a square foot for hotel and retail uses. But the the obligation for commercial development is to pay the fees. For housing, as I mentioned, if the project has seven or more units. They have to provide the units. And then if there's a fraction of a unit left over, for instance, if a project if the numbers would work out to 25.4 lower income units, then these mitigation fees are paid and calculated. Also, projects of six units or less pay the mitigation fees. They have the option of providing an affordable unit, but most would most would choose to pay the mitigation fees and they range from 18 to $30, little over $30 a square foot. But not that many projects would actually pay the mitigation fees for residential projects. So just a little bit about the legal standard for for the fees for the residential fees for residential projects and for and then I'll get to the legal standard for the commercial linkage fees. For the residential projects in the 20 in a important California Supreme Court case which involved the California Buildings Building Industry Association versus the city of San Jose. The Supreme, the California Supreme Court upheld inclusionary requirements and said that they were a land use requirement most similar to rent and price control. And as a consequence, no nexus study showing an environmental impact would be required. But the requirements had to be reasonably related to the public health, safety and welfare. And that the requirements could not be because they were viewed as rent and as similar to rent and price controls, the requirements could not be confiscatory, which they defined as denying an owner a fair rate of return. There was another obstacle toward for the city's BMR requirements prior to the passage of AB 1505 in 2017. And that was that that was that the Costa Hawkins Act had been interpreted in a case called Palmer v. City of Los Angeles to prohibit inclusionary requirements as applied to rental projects. But AB 1505 authorized actual inclusionary requirements for rental projects. But said that the requirements had to be imposed in the zoning ordinance, which they are in yours. And that if more than 15% of the total units were required for low income households under certain circumstances, HCD could require an economic feasibility study and that alternatives to onsite compliance had to be offered, which your program does because a developer may may propose to provide the units offsite land donation or or another proposal. The legal framework is a little bit different for the non residential project. Sorry. Oh. For impact fees. So these are considered to be impact fees. They're based on the impact of the project on the need for affordable housing. And the 2015 studies that Kaiser Marston prepared found that found that residential development creates jobs, a number of those jobs are at, you know, very low, low and moderate income level incomes. You know, they converted that to household income, recognizing that many households have more than one wage earner. And then looked at how many affordable units would be needed to to house the employees created by these businesses. And then and then how much that would cost and converted that into a fee per a fee per per square foot. So for offices, a fee of $129 a square foot was found to be justified by the by the nexus study. Retail actually has the highest justified fees at $222 a square foot. And hotel fees are justified at $49 a square foot. But the the studies were accompanied by an economic feasibility study. And so the fees, as you saw earlier, are substantially less. For instance, while $129 a square foot is justified for offices, the current fee is 2460 a square foot. And it's pretty unusual for cities to set the fees at the at the nexus level. For residential fees are justified at 30 to 42 dollars a square foot and are actually set at 19 to $31 a square foot. So the the program was heard in July of 2019 by the housing commission. In August of in August of 2019 by the planning commission. And in September, your council had a study session. And asked that there be more information about the economic feasibility analysis. And following my presentation, Sujata Srivastava will talk about the economic feasibility analysis. But based on that economic feasibility study, what is being recommended is that there be an increase to 20% of the ownership units of the requirement for ownership units, but that there not be any increase in the required percentage of inclusionary units in rental projects. And so so 20% of ownership units would need to be affordable to either median or moderate income households divided equally. And then they also recommended an increase in the commercial linkage fees. As you can see, no change was recommended in the housing mitigation fees. And in the commercial linkage fees, there's a recommended increase from 2460 to $30 for offices to $15 a square foot for hotel from $12.30 and no increase recommended for retail uses. The resolution before you also includes modifications to the mitigation fee manual, which has all the details about how the program is administered. They would recognize the 20% requirement for ownership units. They would require onsite rental inclusionary units to reflect AB 1505. And they'd also allow applicants to request a waiver if they want to make a constitutional challenge to the to the fees or the requirement. And that is the end of our the end of the presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for the succinct presentation. I had, let's see, four questions. So I think you mentioned in one slide that they could get out of the inclusionary requirements. But then somewhere else you said if it's more than seven, they can't get out of the inclusionary. So do we have? Do we have to offer an out an alternative, even if they even if it's more than seven?
You have for rental housing, you must offer alternatives, but you don't need to offer the alternative of in lieu fees. So the city, so for more than seven, the city allows alternatives. The statute says specifically, you must offer alternatives to onsite construction. And so and so mitigation manual offers alternatives, particularly offsite construction. You know, if somebody wants to donate to another project that's being constructed offsite or land donation. It also allows somebody to propose something that might be creative and create more units. But they all have to create units. Because I think as you saw on the previous discussion, there's a big push for cities to actually create the units now.
Right. So the offsite units would not have to be inclusionary, though. They could be like 100% affordable.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Maybe some would want to partner with a developer.
So the second thing, you said it was unusual to set the fees at the nexus level. So how much below the nexus level do other cities set them? Are we in line with them or are we more or less? Or do you have any idea?
I don't know if Sujata has actually looked at those. I think that what your fees are pretty typical. The, you know, the amount that you have set them related to the nexus amount, your residential fees are probably in terms of what I've seen a bit on the high, you know, a bit on the high side because because resident residential development. Well, residences are very expensive in Cupertino. And your commercial fees are probably a little bit more in line, but you know, if you looked around the state, they probably would also be seem high.
Okay, and my final question is about the idea to have the for sale fee at 20% and the rental fee at 15. I mean, we're kind of trying to encourage more for sale housing and this would seem to to discourage it. So what's the logic in having it 20% for for sale?
I mean, I think Sujata could better respond to that, but basically ownership housing is more profitable than rental housing. And so it's better able to, you know, it's really based on the economic feasibility study.
Wow, if it's more profitable, I would think that we'd be getting gobs of for sale housing condos and townhomes and not so many rentals. But it doesn't seem to work that way.
Yeah, I, you know, I think you should listen to Sujata on that on that point.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I had. So if Sujata could talk about those. Okay, great. All right, that's all I had. Uh, so if Sujata could uh, talk about those before we go to other council members.
Thank you, Mayor, and um, good evening. Uh, let's see, hopefully I can make this work. Okay, um, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So the the key questions that we were um, asked to answer on the feasibility study was whether it would be feasible to increase the BMR requirements for residential for both, we looked at both ownership and rental projects. Um, and then we were also asked about what the potential would be for um, including extremely low income housing in rental projects. Um, as well as what the potential might be for thinking about median and moderate income units in rental projects. So um, the non-residential component was a little bit simpler. Uh, it was really just looking at what the feasibility would be of increasing those linkage fees on those three different kinds of development um, that were studied in that twenty fifteen Nexus study that Barb already discussed. So um, I'm going to be brief with the methodology because we did cover this in our uh, study session. But we essentially did a performa analysis, which is the commonly used way that cities assess the impact of these kinds of BMR requirements on development. Um, and basically what you're doing is you're looking at all the costs of development, comparing them to the projected revenues to see whether or not you're generating enough of a return for an investor to make it possible for um, a private development to occur. We looked at a variety of different data sources. Um, there's uh, some peer review materials that discuss a little bit more about the data sources that we were using. Um, and we provided a supplemental memo kind of explaining um, the data sources that we used. But essentially, they were commercial real estate data sources that are published as well as qualitative information that we were able to get um, from talking to developers and brokers and reviewing some similar projects um, in Santa Clara County mostly. Um, and we, we did do an analysis that looks at different kinds of development projects, but of course, there are a lot of specific factors that can influence, you know, how a project works. So this is kind of a, you know, a sort of hypothetical that's trying to represent reality to the best extent possible, but we recognize that there might be some individual projects that perform a little differently if they're built under different circumstances. So the steps of the analysis are basically, as I mentioned, looking at the prototypes, costs, um, which include land, hard costs or construction costs, soft costs, which include everything from architecture, engineering, um, and the city's fees. Um, building permit fees and other kinds of fees like uh, parkland education fees, for example, um, financing costs. Um, and then we, we did some research to estimate what the values would be of um, both the residential and non-residential product types. And then it's, it's basically an Excel model that calculates the the revenues uh, relative to costs to estimate what a developer's return would be. So this slide kind of worked through the steps in a lot more detail. I can come back to this maybe if there are more questions about it, uh, just in the interest of time. But basically, the, it's just the, the series of steps that we took to be able to undertake the analysis and how we did the calculations. Uh, after our last study session, there was a question about, you know, how do you determine what the appropriate rate of return is? So that it's the requirement is not confiscatory as as Barb explained. And the rates of return that the, the way that we looked at it was based on yield on cost, which is a measure of total, uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's net operating income divided by total development costs is the yield on cost. Um, and we use this metric because it's a commonly used metric that can be compared to something called market cap rates. Um, market cap rates are basically an indicator that a lot of developers use to determine whether a project can achieve the kinds of thresholds that their investors require. So most developers are not using their own money. They're using a combination of equity and debt. And many of those investors are requiring a certain rate of return that can usually be compared to the market cap rate. It's usually about a point or one and a half point over the market cap rate. So we looked at what the cap rates have been over time for office and for multifamily residential. Um, and found that in the last couple of years, of course, this is all pre-COVID. Um, market cap rates for both of those types of development have been very low, um, which is an indicator of a very healthy investment climate where there's very little risk perceived. So what this means is that in most cases, developers are willing to accept a lower rate of return in the current environment than they have, you know, in a, in a more recessionary climate. So to get into the results, um, this sort of explains the question of, you know, why did we determine that twenty percent was appropriate for ownership housing? We did the analysis for the three ownership prototypes um, that had been studied in the Nexus study. Um, so those include single family detached, a small lot, single family or townhouse development and condominium. And because the, the sales prices for these product types are relatively high, they are able to support a higher inclusionary percentage of twenty percent. Um, when you get higher than that, then we found that um, it was less feasible to increase the BMR requirement. We also found that it would be feasible to increase the housing mitigation fees to the maximum that's supported by the Nexus studies if in lieu fees were um, offered as an option. On the rental housing, um, we did find that it was more difficult to make the BMR requirement um, increased feasible. And that's mainly because as you go into higher construction types, the cost of development increases. Right now, the, well, I shouldn't say right now, but pre-COVID, the construction costs had been escalating at rates of seven to eight percent each year. Uh, so they were exceeding the, the amount of increase that you were seeing in rental rates. Um, so construction costs were rising faster than rents, uh, which made it hard for developers to, to make some of the newer buildings pencil out. I think that um, for before, for the, for the projects that had been um, bid on before this kind of rapid escalation, a lot of the new projects that you have seen built were sort of built with older construction costs than what, you know, what was possible in twenty nineteen. So we saw a slowdown regionally, this isn't really unique to Cupertino, in construction of um, certain types of, of rental housing, except for very, very premium rental markets where the rents are much higher. So we did do some sensitivity testing and found that if there were a fifteen percent increase in revenues or a fifteen percent decrease in development costs, then um, increasing the requirement would be potentially feasible. Um, so because the um, current environment is difficult for the type server rental projects that I described, um, we did want to understand, well, what would it take to make ELI units possible in a market, like market rate project? So we have a supplemental memo that explains a little bit of this analysis, but we essentially used uh, we created a new prototype that was different from the ones in the Nexus study. So it's a little bit higher intensity, uh, higher density, I should say, in terms of units per acre. It has um, much lower parking requirements and it has lower city fees. And if you are able to kind of lower the cost of development through a combination of these types of incentives, it does allow for the potential of including more ELI units. On the um, commercial side, we looked at R and D in office. Um, when we did the study, the linkage fee was a little under twenty four dollars per square foot. Um, and that's because the, the linkage fee escalates each year based on an index. Um, but we did find that it would be possible to increase the fee to somewhere between twenty five and thirty dollars per square foot. The thirty dollar per square foot is just uh, kind of barely feasible. It's five point nine nine percent rate of return and we were determining a six percent threshold. And on the hotel feasibility, um, similarly, we did find that it would be possible to increase it to, up to fifteen dollars per square foot. Um, but beyond that, uh, it became more challenged. And on the retail, uh, because we're testing standalone retail, um, the construction costs, as I mentioned before, are extremely high, um, and land costs as well. So we found that it would be pretty challenging to increase the linkage fees on standalone retail. Uh, most of the retail development that we see is usually cross subsidized by other types of uses like office and residential and, you know, a vertical mixed use building, for example. Um, so we did not recommend an increase in the linkage fees for this type of product. Um, and we know that there were some questions um, about what the effect of COVID nineteen would be on the residential and commercial market. A lot of what we've been modeling really depends on the assumptions that you have about construction costs, land prices, revenues. So obviously, if those conditions change, the results are gonna be different. Um, we don't actually have good data yet. We're still in the midst of this crisis and a lot of the information that we have is not quite catching up to show us exactly how much housing prices or rents have been changing in response to the crisis. What we know is that there have been very few um, transactions in the housing market, but that's, you know, due to the shelter in place ordinance. Um, we know that in some places, there might have been some rent decreases, but because of the moratorium on evictions, it's a little hard to see exactly how the market is really responding. Um, so I think that there are some questions about, well, how will construction and land costs respond? You know, maybe if construction and land costs decrease and we're able to stabilize values, then um, that could be good for financial feasibility. But I think it just sort of depends on how all these different trends come together. On the commercial side, I think that, you know, we've seen some recent stories about how some companies are moving towards telecommuting as potentially a more permanent state. We don't know yet how that's gonna affect the office market in the longer term. And we don't yet know when travel will resume and when the hotel market is gonna return. So for all those reasons, unfortunately, it's not possible for us to really calculate the effect of COVID at this time on the results of the analysis. So with that, I'll stop.
Okay, wonderful. So great presentation. Um, so let's bring it back to city council. I don't have any more questions. I had got mine all answered. I didn't realize there were two parts to the presentation or I would have waited. So um, Darcy, you, you wanna start? Do you have anything?
No, not really. So um, for everyone's benefit, when are these uh, fees imposed in the development process?
You're imposed a building permit.
Okay. Um, John, do you have anything?
Yes. So the one I see as being um, most important is the topic that you brought up where I, I, I really appreciate that, you know, they've done a good job of, of trying to quantify and put numbers to the uh, housing uh, business. But I find that what we see in Cupertino is clearly that the developers would rather build rentals. Um, the Hamptons, you know, six hundred units, Marina, uh, two hundred and something units. Um, the Oaks, a hundred and eighty some units, uh, Valco, all rental. All rental. To me, that's just too strong of an indicator to risk uh, accentuating more rental as opposed to for sale by uh, requiring another five percent of BMR units on projects that are for sale. To me, just really continues to tilt the scale. And we already, if, if we were already at a fifty fifty, then I think we could talk about gee whiz, to what level should we go? But we're at, you know, a ninety five five, you know, the Oaks developer proposing eighty eight for sale units. But the, you know, when we have thousands of rental units uh, being requested and virtually no for sale units, to me, that, that's just too strong of an indicator. I, I, I don't think we're ready to make a decision tonight on what I'm suggesting, that the scale should be tipped the other way. And for rental units, it should be twenty percent to kind of get that, that scale back to a reasonable, what's reasonable, fifty fifty, sixty forty, forty sixty? Um, but I do think the scale is out of balance with so much uh, rental. All these new uh, residents coming to the community essentially will be envisioning that at some point in time, they're going to be able to buy their own home. But here we are loading up with so much competition in these rental units without providing more for sale uh, units for them. So again, I, I just really struggle with making it uh, more challenging for for sale units. I'd really like to, to uh, you know, have them double check with a Cupertino analysis um, and what it would take to get that scale back to something fifty fifty like that. So I, I don't think we'd be ready to, to, to move on that tonight. I, I just don't think we're there. Then when we uh, talk about what we are talking about tonight, one of the topics, and that is increasing the fees. Um, sounds reasonable, what they're suggesting for the fees, but at the current time with the COVID nineteen, I just think that that would not be a wise uh, a wise move for us now where it says, adopt resolution twenty dash oh fifty five, where we would be increasing the fees at this point in time. I think it would just send the wrong message to everybody that um, our focus isn't on COVID nineteen, it's more about adjusting our city fees. And I just don't think that's where we want to be. So unfortunately, depends on your perspective, I just don't think we should make a motion on this tonight. Just assume it's a study session. I learned a lot. And I really appreciate uh, those uh, PowerPoint slides. I'm gonna keep those for, for clearly future discussions, but um, that's where, where I'm at for tonight.
Okay, John, I think um, I recall one of the slides, there's some issue with increasing the rental percentage beyond fifteen percent. Um, what was that slide? It's, I think it said you had to prove that it was feasible. Barb, do you have that slide? Or you can just talk about that. That's fine.
That was one of Sujata's fly, is like showing that the, that if you increase the percentage in rental housing to twenty or twenty five percent, it would be infeasible. Um, you know, I, I the concern that the legislature had and the governor had when they uh, when they adopted AB fifteen oh five was that cities would raise the inclusionary requirement to a level that would be infeasible. So if you raise it to a level that's over um, fifteen percent, under some circumstances, H C D can then demand a economic feasibility study. So we generally don't recommend that people raise the rental rate, the, you know, the rental inclusionary percentage over fifteen percent unless it's supported by an economic feasibility study.
Right. So I, I, I would be suggesting that in order to make uh, uh, a, a motion to for these items, and again, I don't think we're ready tonight, but I, I do think that a Cupertino based feasibility analysis should be done. The uh, the infinite annuity of rental property compared to the present day value of a for sale unit and take a few of our in-process developments, Marina, Hamptons, uh, Oaks, and do that analysis to the point where it's sufficient for us to then say, yes, we would be justified in the twenty percent in rental and keeping the for sale at fifteen percent. To me, the evidence is it, it, it's not gonna be a hard uh, uh, thing to calculate when we have, you know, every project in that ballpark.
Well, I, correct, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but Well, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought for the SB 35 project, the 1,201 BMR units were rentals, but some percentage of the market rate units, I thought, were going to be for-sale. Is that my, not remembering this right? Is there anyone on staff that can?
I think you're correct. I think there's, what, two condo towers?
Yeah, like 660 units roughly.
Something like that, that's for sale.
Right. So personally, I think we are ready to move on this tonight. I think if something happens, if the recovery is, you know, if we go into a depression, we can always come back and change it again. I mean, there's nothing that, you know, if 20% is too high for for-sale, you know, we can come back and lower it in the future. And remember, you know, the NEXUS study, the fees are what the city, you know, should be charging, and we're charging, even with these increases, just a fraction of what the NEXUS study shows. So I, you know, I disagree. I would be ready, this is not a study session, this is a public hearing, and personally, I would be ready to accept the staff's recommendations, but...
Well, to that end, in the interest of time, do we have any?
Everybody else? What?
Do we have any public input?
Let me see.
Before we weigh in?
Council Number Stinks, we have Kitty Moore.
Yeah, we have one person. Kitty, Kitty, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Good evening, Mayor Sharf. I just, are you there?
We are here.
Okay. Just looking at some numbers, you have $15 per square foot for a hotel. And the Cupertino Village Hotel, 210,000 square feet, you would generate 3.15 million in fees. If, just throwing a number out there, $700,000 for a BMR unit, you'd end up with 4.5 units. And then if you think about the number and types of jobs that that hotel would need, the four and a half units wouldn't cover, you know, the housekeeping staff, cafeteria, those sorts of things. Looking at your commercial, you have $30 per square foot. So for Main Street, for example, 240,000 square feet of office there, you'd end up with 7.2 million. And using the same 700,000, which might be a low-ball number for a BMR unit, you'd end up with 10 units. And foreseeably, for 240,000 square feet of office, you'd have 1,200 employees. And I would guess that you would have 40, maybe more, who would qualify for BMR units out of the 1,200. And you're only going to be generating enough for 10 units. So I just want to remind you that at the start of the meeting, you have residents asking for you to address homelessness. And if we want to adequately house people across the economic spectrum in the city, we have to have the funding. So representing myself only, I would like to see these fees increased because they are barely, barely covering the need that we actually have here. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say they're not, as you pointed out, they're not covering the need at all. And we're well aware of that because we're charging well below, you know, the NEXUS. But apparently, for whatever reason, charging the NEXUS is just not something that we could even think about doing. So yeah, they're way too low. Raising them, they're still going to be way too low. So anyone else wish to speak? I see Dr. Chow, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, Liang.
Hello, hi. So I'd like to understand, when we talk about fees per square foot, are we talking about the living space for the residential units and not counting amenities space and parking space, right?
That's correct.
So like for single-family homes, then the same thing, we won't count parking garage? So it will be only the square footage of livables, living space?
Yes.
Okay. And then you, in your slide says, this is feasible, that is not feasible. What's the definition of feasible? What's the feasible, considered feasible in terms of rate of return for a commercial project or residential?
So there are different thresholds depending on the type of real estate investment. So for rental, it was yield on cost of 4.75%. And for office, it was 6.0% yield on cost. And that's just based on kind of how the real estate market works for those different product types and what the cap rates are for those projects.
So what does that mean, yield of cost? Let's say I have a rental project. I am investing in $10 million, let's say 10, it's, I don't know, let's say $30 million project. Then what is my investment? What do I need to get in terms of profit so that it's feasible? How, could you use a concrete example so that I can see what exactly feasible means? And then when we include 15% BMR or 20%, what, how that changed the feasibility of the project?
I could point you to the performas that are in our, in our report from July that kind of show the calculations in more detail, if that would be...
Performa, which attachment? Is that, is that one of the attachments?
Yes. So it would be Attachment C, I believe, in your packet? So you could look at Figure 25, which is on Page 30, to look at the lower-density rental apartments, for example. And for each column, we're showing you what the yield on cost is for the different scenarios, depending on what the inclusionary requirement is. And then on Figure 26 on the following page, you can see that for the higher-density apartment. So you can see at the bottom there what the yield, what the return is, essentially. So you can see what the net revenues would be. And yield on cost is basically your net operating income divided by your total development cost. But you can also see what your net revenues would be for that project.
So yield on cost is my, so I would expect 4.75% of profit?
Right. That's kind of your margin, your margin of what your, what your yield is each year, exactly.
And then when it's over that, it's considered feasible? When it's under that, it's considered infeasible? So that's how you decide if it's feasible or not?
That's right. For apartments, yes.
Okay. So why do we only evaluate retail as a standalone project? Most of the retails we look at are in mixed-use development, right? So why are you looking at only standalone?
Well, we were, we were building our analysis on the NEXUS study, which looked at the feasibility of a standalone retail. So we were basically updating that analysis. But that does, but in the, some of the prototypes, there are, there is some ground-floor retail, I believe. So you can kind of see that that, that those projects are inclusive of some retail component as well. So for example, Prototype 5 is a residential project that has some ground-floor retail in it. And so we're looking at what the feasibility is of a mixed-use project there.
Okay. So I have on the screen Figure 25, right? So let's say, take Scenario 1, 0, no BMR required, and net revenue is $1 million. So yield on cost, that means for that $1 million of, what does that mean?
So 4.5% is actually, if you see the footnote, you can see what the definition of it is, but it's the net operating income, which is up on that, on the revenues line.
How do you get the 45% in this table?
Yeah, it's the net operating income of the project, the total net operating income. If you move your cursor up under revenues, it's the total net operating income, so combining the residential and the retail, divided by the total development cost.
Okay, I'll try to understand this later. Okay, so then another question is EOI, is, there is a memo on EOI that we have asked for. Is there any reason we, you are not making a recommendation? You know, EOI, why are we not considering that right now?
I can answer this piece. We are, council had asked us to bring back options for building extremely low-income units, and we've started the process, and we wanted to bring you what we have. But the rental portion would be infeasible at this time to include extremely low income. And so we wanted to do more work on this as part of the Housing Strategies Work Program item that the city has approved. And so this, this would be a continuing conversation, and staff will be doing more work on this.
Oh, so the information so far is not quite feasible? Even if we tread off some EOI with moderate income housing, like someone can provide, instead of provide only low-income, very-low income, 40-60, they can provide 10% of the very-low income and then 10% moderate income to, to offset each other?
Oh, I don't think so.
So is that considered?
Barbara Sujata, would you be able to provide more information on that?
Yeah, I understand that just requiring EOI might not be feasible, but what if we allow different types?
Yeah, so our memo did consider kind of a mix of different income categories. And what we found was, because right now, well, based on the data that we had collected in 2019, construction costs for these higher-density development projects were quite high. So we were having a hard time showing that inclusionary requirements would be feasible to increase. But if you did a mix of different kinds of strategies, like allowing more units per acre than what is in these scenarios, or reducing the parking to one unit per, I'm sorry, one space per unit, and other kinds of strategies, then you could have different levels of ELI units in those projects. But it would require lowering costs through a combination of these different kinds of strategies.
Okay, good. So basically, with our current standard, 15% of BMR rental is feasible for the development. They don't need any other, like, reduction of parking space and/or higher units per acre. So what's the assumption? So you are assuming they satisfy the city's existing parking requirement? And what's the assumption on units per acre that's feasible in your model?
So the, the one that works the best has 76 units per acre, that's Prototype 5. And there are, the parking spaces are basically two per unit, but we did factor in a reduction of about, a some parking reduction because of the density bonuses that they might receive from providing low-income units on site. So this is something that we worked with staff to kind of provide these assumptions of what the reduced parking spaces would be. So they do benefit from a little bit of a parking reduction, but not to the extent of what we modeled for the ELI unit.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm trying to understand, okay, for a project, we have project that, with, they can, so the study shows that it's feasible for them to deliver 15% of BMR units on-site, right? And then, but then if the developer comes in and say, no, it's not feasible, they want some other incentives. Can they justify that? Because this NEXUS study already showed it's feasible. So can they then use this to justify, say they need more financial incentives in other way because they don't think 15% is feasible? Basically, they disagree with your study. So...
Barb, I wonder if you could help?
I guess, can the city push back, based on your study? Can the city push back and say, you should be able to include 15% of BMR units comfortably? It's feasible because we have done this NEXUS analysis. So if you want to get any other financial, you can, you cannot justify any other extra benefit in order to, to support this project because you don't need it, right? Economically, they need that in order for the project to be feasible.
HCD only, am I here? Yeah, HCD only has the authority to look at, to look at local ordinances that require more than 15%.
Right, exactly.
So if the city doesn't go above 15%, HCD doesn't have the authority. The, now, they may ask, when you do your housing element, you need to show that your requirements are feasible. But given the number of rental projects proposed in the city, you know, with the existing 15% requirement, I think the city would have good grounds for saying that it's a feasible requirement.
Okay. And also that they, our standards also say they need to be, have comparable number of bedrooms, right? They need to be dispersed throughout the project. Can a developer come and say, no, it's not feasible for me to provide BMR units that's comparable in the number of bedrooms or dispersed? So I will need to now follow that standard? Do they have ground for that kind of argument?
Well, a developer that meets your inclusionary requirement probably qualifies for a density bonus. And at that point, they can request a concession. They would probably be entitled to anywhere from one to three quote concessions. And they could show, if they could show that having, let's say, smaller units that weren't dispersed, reduce the cost to the project and help them support the affordable units, yes, then probably the city would need to grant that concession.
My point is, your, your NEXUS analysis already show that with the base density, they can support comparable-sized units dispersed throughout the project comfortably. It's feasible. Your NEXUS study shows...
Well, the NEXUS, NEXUS study doesn't look at economic feasibility per se. It only looks at the impacts of the project to see if the fees are justified. Heather, I see you.
Yeah, I guess, I just sort of wrap this up in saying that the feasibility analysis provides some evidence based on projects in general that have been looked at, but it's not a project-specific analysis for any specific project.
And they could get those concessions like, like we've seen.
Because what I mean saying is, they can always argue that, oh, I don't want to follow this, I don't want to follow that, I can get more economic benefits.
Right. So what's the point though?
The NEXUS study already showed that they can actually afford it. Why does can they justify it a second time for for?
Right, because they're allowed to seek concessions, whether it's.
But they still need to justify they need that.
Right.
Economical benefited. They are allowed to seek, but they still need to justify for that, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, can we finish up here?
Yeah, so I support that we don't increase the percentage for for sale because we don't want to discourage people to provide for sale. But I think we should still increase the office right now.
Okay, anyone else, Darcy or Rod?
Um, yeah, I I would be happy to comment, can we unshare the screen?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. I I think that um it does make sense for us to to move on this. I think there is development uh happening in the city. And I think it would be responsible for us to use the economics uh to um to uh to move toward to to execute the staff recommendation essentially. And and I think particularly for office, it would be important. Um, I uh could support a twenty percent on for sale housing, you know, there's a lot less risk with that because uh somebody can develop that and and flip it, they can turn it into money, so the risk is less. Um, I uh am supportive of um moderately adjusting uh hotel. I think we have an opportunity here as there are hotels on uh in in play. Um, I think the, you know, while it may take a while to get back, these projects are built for decades, not for a year or two or three. And so I do think um, you know, we ought to raise that responsibly. Uh, if we're trying to encourage retail, or maybe, you know, we we could leave it alone, or we could even consider dialing it down. Um, but I I don't think we need to uh prolong this discussion. I think it would be um it would be responsible for us to take action. And frankly, I'd like to see us also um take action on our uh to include more in our transportation mitigation fees as well. Because I think there's new new efforts underway, including permanent funding for the Via Shuttle, for example, uh for transit stop on Stevens Creek overpass, these kinds of things. Um, I think we need to continue to work on recovering the cost uh to the public of the the projects um that are built in our city. And I think this this is a responsible effort based on sound economic analysis. So I'd like to thank uh staff for for queuing this up. And I I the as a study session, we can't move this forward tonight, but I.
It's not a stu- it's not a study session, it's a public hearing.
Oh, okay. Would you like a motion then?
I'd love a motion.
I would move the staff recommendation.
I will second that. Okay, um.
First, you can take the vote. Somebody read the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Chow.
So.
Was that a yes or a no? I didn't understand that.
I'm not sure I want to support the twenty percent B M R.
So is that a no?
Okay, I make a friend amendment to see that I have support that we um not increase the B M R percentage for for sale housing, for sale condos.
I'll second that.
Courage uh for sale housing in Cupertino.
Okay, so John seconded it.
So maybe we can vote on this first.
So, right, so how does this work? Um, Kirsten, do we vote on the amendment first or what?
Well, does the mover want to accept, let's see?
No, I no, I I uh oh, Rod Rod made the motion, so he has.
I I think the staff recommendation is prudent. I think the economic analysis shows that the market can sustain twenty percent. We need more B M R housing, therefore, let's do it. Let's get more inclusionary housing in the market rate housing that gets built. I I would like to move, well, I have moved the staff recommendation, there's a second on that. So if you want to bring a substitute motion, go ahead. But uh I like I like the twenty percent as proposed.
Okay, so I think I'm making an amendment, right? So we would make, uh so if Rod doesn't agree with the amendment, we would vote on the amendment first, right?
You could do that. The amendment would be to remove the staff recommendation of increasing the inclusionary on for sale to twenty percent from the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, Leon moved that and John seconded, so I guess first we vote on that. Um, all right, so.
Call the vote, Kirsten.
Right, call for the vote on the amendment.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Place Mayor Paul?
Nay.
Mayor Sharp?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so now can we vote on the original motion?
Okay.
Okay, so now we need a roll call vote on the original motion.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Place Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, oh my goodness, let's see, where are we now? Oh, I closed, I must have closed, I legislate here. Let me go to my other computer. We are on to we finish the public hearing. Okay, we're on to item twenty five. Twenty dash seven zero one one. Adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, mitig- mitigation measures and a mitigation monitoring or reporting program for Rednarck Creek Trail and authorization to execute an associated joint use agreement and a land exchange with Santa Clara Valley Water District. So I guess we are ready for the staff report. And could everybody mute themselves? We're hearing a lot of noise there.
Okay, good evening, hopefully you can see the screen there. Um, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, um the agenda items for the Riggnart Creek Trail Project and and council is asked to specifically consider three items on this next slide. These are the specific recommendations that you are asked to consider this evening. They include adopting a mitigated negative declaration, authori- authorize authorization to enter into a joint use agreement with Valley Water and to authorize a land exchange to facilitate the project. Later this fall, staff will be bringing this project back to council to present the final design and to authorize the project for bidding. This is not the typical proj- process for a public works project. Typically, once a project is fully funded, such as the Riggnart Creek Trail is, staff proceeds with the design and follows with construction with no additional council direction. As this project has generated considerable interest and many residents are concerned with improvements near their homes and or their private fencing, the next council meeting in the fall would be the time for both council and residents to ask questions regarding design and trail amenities that may not be environmentally related. Many may ask why now, why why now the design is not yet complete? And there are two reasons. One reason is that not until the environmental determination is accepted by council can the designer know with certainty how to finish their work. And the second reason is the pandemic and the challenges the shelter in place order has caused in meeting with residents. Also know that construction will not be starting tomorrow. And I encourage any resident uh with fencing concerns to contact contact staff or respond to staff's uh inquiries regarding their fencing. This next slide shows where we have been and where we are going. You can see that this project started a few years ago and was recently considered by council just this last September. You can see uh where we are this evening and when we will be back this fall. And construction is expected to begin in the summer fall of twenty twenty one. And this is uh that construction schedule is due to a desire not to be constructing the trail uh while water would be flowing into into the creek and also to not have an effect on nesting birds that may be found when we go out there to monitor for that. Uh, before introducing the team, I would like council to consider that there will be uh fu- future meetings where many non-environmental concerns can be heard. And the team presenting this this evening in order is Gail Sees, uh Public Works Park Improvement Manager. We have Michael Campbell, he's a environmental consultant for David J. Powers and Associates. David Stillman, Public Works Transportation Manager. We also have Kelly Hardwick, Principal uh with H T Harvey and Associates for any ecologic ecology or bio biology questions. And a Carrie Janello, uh she's a principal for Lingworth and Rodkin Acoustics. We also have John Caciotti, he's a principal engineer for H M H Engineers. So I'll be controlling the presentation and the next slide, uh Michael, um hopefully we can all hear you, um is yours. And let me know in advance and and please be precise with your time, Michael.
Okay, thank you, Roger, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, um and thank you, uh Mayor Sharp and members of the council. Um, I'm gonna run through the initial study process here uh for you briefly and quickly. Um, first question, what is an in- initial study M N D? And the uh our first bullet point there explains that initial study is the document uh that the council will use to make a decision on what type of uh sequoque clearance will be adopted. It's the uh it's the document that provides the analysis, reviews potential impacts and allows for the decision to be made whether a negative declaration will be adopted or a mitigated negative declaration or an E I R is required. Um, a negative declaration uh is the option that's chosen when there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant impact. If the initial study indicates there are no impacts, uh then you typically would adopt a negative deck. Um, a mitigated negative declaration uh is adopted when the initial study identifies impacts and provides mitigation measures to reduce those impacts to less than significant levels. So in the case of the Riggnart Creek Trail initial study, um the initial study indicated that there were some areas of potential impact and it did provide uh mitigation measures to reduce those impacts. And so that's why the recommendation tonight is for the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. Next slide, please. So when is it, uh when do we do this process? Well, as as Roger was explaining, um it's prior to the final design of the project. Um, and in the flow chart slide uh that he showed, you can see that um we started the sequel process after the completion of the sixty five percent drawings from the engineers, uh but prior to the hundred percent drawings. And the reason for that, as Roger explained, is we want to allow the uh a little bit of flexibility in there in case little adjustments need to be made to accommodate uh environmental issues, other things like that, without having to go back through the sequel process and renotice and go through that whole procedure. Next slide, please. So these are the basic steps in the process uh that we took uh in chronological order. Uh, we started with the completion of the technical analyses and we required uh about three technical reports for this. Uh, an archaeology study, biological resources analysis and a noise analysis. Um, after we completed those, we pulled an administrative draft of the initial study together, um shared that with the city staff, um went back and forth on a couple of rounds of amendments and then or I'm sorry, revisions to the document until uh the point where the city is satisfied in sending it out for public review. Um, at that point, it went out for a thirty day public review period uh to accept comments from the public and from various agencies. Um, following the closing, the closing of the thirty day review period, um we prepared responses to comments. This is not something that's typically required under sequo for an initial study process. It is for an E I R, but in this case, due to the large volume of comments that we received, uh we thought it would be appropriate um to uh prepare that document. So we've done that and there are copies of those uh included as attachments to the staff report uh in your packets tonight. Um, next step in the process, after we finished the responses to comments and following the public review, was to take it to the E R C meeting, Environmental Review Committee, that happened on April sixteenth. And the outcome of the meeting was to um recommend that the city council adopt the final initial study and M N D. Next slide. So this is a brief summary of what the findings in the initial study were. Uh, it did, as I mentioned, um find potentially significant impacts in several areas and also provide mitigation measures to reduce those impacts to less than significant levels. Um, we found biological resource impacts, uh there are potential impacts to uh uh special status species. Um, there were potential impacts to riparian habitat and also to nesting birds. Um, on the cultural and tribal resources, um the initial study determined there were potentially significant impacts due to uh the presence of uh buried cultural um in uh materials, um basically archaeological uh materials. Um, hazards and hazardous materials, um because the area, like most of the Santa Clara Valley, was used for agricultural purposes at one time. Um, there's the potential for agricultural chemicals to still be present in the uh subsurface uh soil layers. Uh, so we had to address that. And then uh noise, uh because of the concern in the proximity, the close proximity of existing residences to the trail alignment, um we had to address potential noise impacts. Next slide. So this is a condensed version of the comments that we received. These are the subject areas uh that uh the comments uh represented. Uh, like I said, noise was a an issue for many residents that live adjacent to the trail. Um, some expressed a desire for sound walls, others talked about fencing. Um, biological impacts, again, additional habitat uh impacts and the timing of some of the proposed mitigation measures. Um, review period discrepancy, there was a slight discrepancy in what in what was published. The uh M N D, I think, had a closure date for the uh public review period of uh March eighth, which happened to fall on a Sunday. So when we realized that, uh we adjusted that to allow for uh accepting comments through the following day, the Monday, um even though technically it was beyond the thirty days. It was a a simple mistake, a discrepancy between the M N D and what was published on the city's website. Um, safety and crosswalks, another issue. Um, the trail alignment will cross public street in two locations. Uh, there was an issue or concern regarding safety um and distance between the crosswalks and um residential driveways and potential conflicts with back out movements and things like that. Um, and then dust, of course, construction related um dust issues. The uh attachment E of the staff report, as I mentioned, uh contains uh the responses to comments. Um, it's a complete list of all the comments and all of the city's responses. Next slide. Um, at the April sixteenth, uh Environmental Review Committee meeting, there were additional comments um that were brought up on placement of the bridge and issues regarding the removal of the bridge. Uh, pedestrian bike um facilities in the vicinity of the trail near some public streets was was raised. Um, some questions, some technical aspects of the noise assessment. Um, other safety and security measures regarding um properties adjacent to the trail. Um, aesthetic impacts of potential fencing. Aesthetic impacts of potential fencing. Again, the timing of the environmental review process compared to the completeness of the development plans was raised. And then, again, crosswalk and access ramp locations in proximity to residential driveways. So these were additional comments that were raised at the April 16th ERC meeting. And again, a second set of responses to comments was produced and a copy of that is in attachment F of your packet. And with that, I will turn it over to Gail.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Gail Seeds, Park Improvement Manager. And I'm here to speak briefly about the recommendation to authorize execution of a joint use agreement with Santa Clara Valley Water District, known as Valley Water. The joint use agreement spells out allowing for public use of land that is owned by Valley Water and in this case, for opening up Valley Water-owned property for Regnar Creek Trail and public use of Regnar Creek Trail. It addresses Valley Water's property, not the City of Cupertino property. It does consolidate two existing joint use agreements that were executed in 1998 and 2004 along segments of the Regnar Creek alignment. And it does, as noted, allow for public use and for implementation of a trail and associated features to occur on Valley Water property. Next slide. The joint use agreement spells out who is responsible for what. Valley Water remains responsible for construction, operations, maintenance relating to their mission to provide flood protection, stream stewardship, and management of water resources. And they will take care of vegetation management associated with those things. The city's responsibilities are summarized in the bullets on this slide. We will operate and maintain the trail-related improvements and then do the customary things, remove trash, do trailside vegetation management, provide security as needed, and detours if there's ever a need to close the trail for a maintenance activity or some other operation. And also, if at any time in the future, an improvement needs to be removed, such as the bridge or the fence, Valley Water would provide notice to us and that would be the city's responsibility as well. These terms are customary in joint use agreements. I would also add that there is provision to collaborate. It is a quite collaborative agreement to collaborate on signage and to meet together to schedule maintenance, construction, and activities along the creek. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you. And now I'd like to turn this over to David Stillman, our Transportation Manager. He'd like to speak to you briefly about the proposed land exchange.
Thank you, Gail. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Back in 1992, the city constructed a ball field and some related facilities on Wilson Park. Two of the ball fields encroach upon lands owned by Valley Water along the north side of Regnar Creek. During our ongoing discussions with Valley Water, staff identified the opportunity to rectify this encroachment by performing a land exchange with Valley Water that would grant the piece of land upon which the ball fields encroach to the city while giving Valley Water a contiguous piece of land equivalent, the equivalent area at the end of Parkside Lane. Because the exchange involves equal areas, square footage, and they're less than 5,000 square feet, the exchange can be implemented relatively simply without the need for an appraisal. This land exchange is mutually beneficial for Valley Water and for the city as it would ensure that the long-term operation of the ball fields can continue since the fields would now be entirely on city property while facilitating Valley Water's access to the new maintenance ramp that'll be constructed on the north side of the creek near the end of Parkside Lane. One non-protected tree will need to be removed to facilitate Valley Water's access to the ramp. Though no replacement trees required by code, the city does intend to plant a replacement tree in the park. This land exchange will not involve a change in land uses and it's exempt from SEQA. The joint use agreement would become effective upon the recording of a lotline adjustment to complete this transfer. Next slide, please. And this diagram shows the land exchange that I just described, the ball fields there at Wilson Park. You see on the, kind of along the north side of the image, the red, the reddish strip is the area of land that Valley Water will be granting to the city. The blue piece of land to the west of the ballpark is the area of land that the city owns that will be granting to Valley Water. It's next to an existing Valley Water easement that goes between the end of Parkside Lane and the creek, which is shown in kind of a purple color. The yellow V shape there underneath the the blue land that we're giving to Valley Water is the location of the new maintenance ramp on the north side of the creek. The old maintenance ramp, you can see on the right side of the diagram in green, kind of at the bottom of the yellow proposed pedestrian bridge. The strip of brown along the bottom of the image is the proposed trail. Next slide, please. So the next steps, if the staff recommended actions are authorized, which I'll summarize again in a moment, our next steps are to record the lotline adjustment for the land exchange and execute the joint use agreement while moving forward with completing the 100% design, including the associated tasks such as acquiring the necessary permits from the regulatory agencies and the continued meetings with neighbors to address issues of privacy, security, and noise. We expect to return to council in early fall with the 100% design and request for authorization to bid for construction and begin construction next year. Next slide. So recommended actions tonight, and I'll, I will read these off the slide verbatim. Consider the recommendation of, request the council, consider the recommendation of the Environmental Review Committee and adopt a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the Regnar Creek Trail project, adopting mitigation measures and adopting the mitigation monitoring reporting program. We recommend that council authorize the city manager to execute a joint use agreement with Santa Clara Valley Water District, including a proposed minor land exchange at Wilson Park. And finally, we request council determine that the proposed land exchange is in the public interest and adopt resolution authorizing execution of a minor land exchange with Santa Clara Valley Water District. And that concludes our presentation tonight. We'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, the land exchange, it sounds like we can finally fix that issue with the ball field. And I was reading today about the water district and some things that happened in Saratoga where they decided to take back the land that had been encroached upon. It caused a lot of issues for the residents that had gotten used to using that land and all of a sudden, you know, they were no longer able to. So I think this is, this is excellent. The only question I had, reading the comments and the responses, I guess this is for David J. Powers and Associates. It's the, it was related to the nesting, when the birds nest and, you know, what can be done to ensure that construction is not delayed by us not being ready due to nesting season? You know, since COVID-19, the desire for this trail has increased and the desire to get the water district land open to the public as soon as possible is something that, you know, we're hearing from the residents. So can someone comment about the whole issue with the nesting?
I'll, I'll take a shot at it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The mitigation that we put in there allows two options. If the construction schedule is to take place during the nesting season, then they have to conduct pre-construction nesting surveys. So they have to go out and survey for nests and then take appropriate actions before they can begin construction. If they, if the construction happens during the non-breeding season, but will run into the breeding season, then they have the option of going and removing what they call nesting substrate. So the bushes and shrubs and things that could contain nests, they can actually remove that prior to the start of the nesting season, which begins in February and runs through the end of August. So they can take that out of the way before February and eliminate the potential of there being nesting birds during, you know, during the summer when they want to do the construction.
All right, great. Yeah, that answers that. So my colleagues can comment and just remind everybody, we're talking about these three issues, the MND, the land swap, and the, my mind's going blank at midnight.
Joint use agreement.
Joint use agreement, sorry. Okay, so Councilmember Chow, do you have anything?
Other people can go first.
Okay, Councilmember Willie.
Is it possible we might hear from the public first?
Sure. I was trying to follow the rules of order, but I mean, Rosenberg's, but sure. I'm happy to hear from the public first if, let me see if anyone has their hand raised. I see three speakers. We'll start with Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Hello, can you?
Yes, we hear, yeah, we hear you.
Okay.
I'll start the timer, okay. Okay.
That's it. I'm addressing just the section south of Library Field. So all my comments are with regard to that section. The environmental review did not study the intersection of Pacifica and Torre. And if you think about walking through, having the trail there, it's a mess. The 2016 Cupertino bicycle transportation plan does not include the south of Library Field as part of this trail. So I don't know why or who decided to add this section. It's a section that doesn't enhance the trail, yet it has a significant cost. It potentially harms the well-established trees used for shade and enjoyment at the Library Field. It adds a very small section that goes nowhere. It adds confusion and safety at that intersection of Torre and Pacifica. In summary, it's a very costly section and it does not match the bicycle transportation plan. I'm asking the city council to add to a future agenda two items, remove this section from the plan and make Library Field an official park. We desperately need it on the east side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. So Roger, can you comment on this? Unmute.
David, David may, he'll have more.
Or David, yeah, whoever from your staff.
Sure, I can take a stab at it. So, yeah, so regarding the the section of path along Pacifica, staff and the engineers felt that it made sense to provide continuity to the trail by connecting it with the intersection at Torre and Pacifica rather than terminating it mid-block on Pacifica. That way, we are leading people to and from an intersection that has control on one leg and has crosswalk rather than kind of leaving them at a, at a mid-block location to, to cross and to enter the trail. So that's why that section of, of trail was included in the project. There, we realized that there are trees in close proximity to the sidewalk along Pacifica and to the location where the, we proposed the trail to be there, which is just behind the backup walk. There are measures that we can implement in, in construction of that portion of the trail to, to ensure that the trees and the root system of the trees are protected, no harm comes to those trees so that, so that they would remain. The second part of her question relating to converting Library Field to a park, I'll take a stab at this, I'm not the expert on this, on this subject, but the city typically tries to steer away from dual zoning parcels. And currently, the civic center parcel is zoned as a public building and the land use is a, is a public facility. So to change Library Field to a park, you'd either have to dual-zone the civic center or subdivide that parcel and rezone Library Field. And modifying the zoning and land use of Library Field would require a general plan amendment. That's certainly something that, that could be done, but it's just, it's a process and not simply a matter of changing the name to Library Park.
Okay, yeah, understood. I know there's been a lot over the years, a lot of concern that it would be developed for some other buildings instead of remaining, you know, open space. I think there was a teen center proposed there. So I understand where Peggy's coming from on that, and that's certainly something we can address in the future. Okay, so next on the list, I see Seema Linskog. Welcome, Seema.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Hey, Mayor Scharr and council members, thank you all for your hard work in support of the city and everything that you guys do and staying up so late every Tuesday. I'm here to urge you to adopt resolutions 20-057 and 058 and authorize the city manager to execute the joint use agreement with the, with the Santa Clara Water District. I'd also like to request that the city dispense with the authorization to put out to bid meeting in the fall. The city and all the residents have already spent a ton of time, effort, and money getting to this point over the past 18 months. We've had almost 2,500 residents sign a petition and support the trail. It's been one of the most scrutinized projects in Cupertino history and it has been greenlit by the city council multiple times. The city has bent over backwards to engage with residents along the trail. No other project has had to jump through so many hoops and pass through so many gates. I feel like it's an absolutely unfair burden to put on this project and a complete disregard of the will of the majority of Cupertino residents. They have spoken again and again on this issue, we, we want this trail. The decision from the council today is whether to follow the recommendation of the ERC and adopt the MND, not to debate the budget impact or design of the trail, which has, those issues haven't been listed as agenda items. The MND was approved unanimously in the Environmental Review Committee, which included city council member Chow, who's present today. In the current pandemic situation that we're in, it's more vital than ever to create safe recreation spaces for our community, especially since all of us have to do physical distancing while walking and biking. Multiple cities around the Bay Area and around the world, like San Francisco and Oakland, are closing down streets to create walking paths for their residents because they don't have trails. And here we have a trail right in the middle of, like a key part of Cupertino, and we need to make it available as soon as possible for residents' use. We've heard from multiple residents who would like to use the trail right now. It's really easy to do, just unlock the gates. Since the gyms and the schoolyards and many of the local parks are closed, there's a strong need for safe nature trails for physical exercise. We've talked about this before and I think all the city council members I've spoken to have been very positive to the idea and it would be a fantastic gift to our residents and create a lot of positive feeling in the community. So I would really encourage you guys to consider that idea. Those were all my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, I have someone with the same last name as you, Eric Linskog.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? Mayor and city council members, thank you for letting me speak. I would like to thank the staff for, you know, all the excellent work they've done on this project. Though I'm, just seem a little bit confused why this, you know, we hear that it's going to be brought back for 100% review, even though the city council has already decided on it, has been, was it at a 75% decision? So I'm not sure it's the city staff's role to keep asking the city council to, to reconfirm their vote. And it kind of sets a dangerous precedent that the city council decision means nothing. So I think we should, that decision has been made and the city staff should not ask it to be redone. On the comment on the, you know, the rattle along Library Field, I, I think it actually would be, I mean, I think it would look much better to have the trail continue along, between the trees. It would not look good to have it continue along the side of the street, actually, I think. Uh, and, uh, you know, to Peggy Griffin's comment that she wants to convert Library Field to a park, I mean, you know, I don't have anything against that, but I note that a park usually has trails. So if you want a more park-like feeling on this field, it would actually be good to add a trail along the, you know, under the trees there. That's my, my, my thinking. Um, uh, well, I should also mention here at, uh, I am a, you know, commissioner on the backpedal commissioner, although I'm speaking as a, as a resident here. Um, should like to point out that, uh, the environmental review showed no significant impacts after the proposed mitigations. Uh, but, uh, you know, this type of project will improve local air, air quality and global climate as it, you know, reduces car traffic. Uh, there was also this discussion about birds and, uh, no negative impact was found after the proposed mitigations there also. But on the other hand, you don't have to look very hard to find, uh, a lot of research, uh, published that birds are very susceptible to global warming. Uh, so, you know, if you do care about the birds, this is exactly the right type of project we should do. And also, this trail is part of a, will effectively become part of a park system which will require, provide local recreation so people don't have to travel so far, uh, to, you know.
Hey, please finish up.
Um, I think that's it. Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. Oh, let me unmute you. Try again to unmute you. There you go. Okay, great. Yeah, great. I'll reset the clock. Welcome.
By the way, you best spelled my name.
Oh, I, I didn't do that. I don't know who wrote that. I noticed it too.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Sheriff and Councilmembers. It is getting late. Uh, uh, as a longtime resident of Cupertino, I'm speaking here tonight to urge you to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation measures recommended by the Environmental Review Committee. This committee fully vetted the project and unanimously approved it. So let's move on to the next steps in getting this trail actually constructed. We've been at this a long time. I also urge you to approve the joint use agreement and land exchange with Valley Water. I was quite surprised to learn that the baseball field at Wilson Park encroached on the Valley Water property. So this is a land exchange which benefits both the city of Cupertino and Valley Water and makes a lot of sense. This is an excellent project that has a lot of benefits for the community. As a former library commissioner and longtime library supporter, improving access to the, to the library, I mean, it will open again, I'm sure, without having to drive a car is a big step forward. I urge council to unanimously approve this mitigation report and authorize the city manager to execute the joint use agreement with Valley Water and agree to the land exchange. Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. And, um, next we have Alango Ganga. Welcome, Alango. I tried to unmute you. Okay, there you go.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes, okay.
Yes, okay, so thank you. And I'm Alango Ganga. I'm, uh, bicycle and pedestrian commissioner, but, uh, today I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a Cupertino resident. Um, you know, the, uh, director, Public Works Director spoke about the process that was followed and I would like to bring your attention and to public attention that certain processes were violated or circumvented during the Regnar Creek Trail approval. Number one, uh, the City Council Agenda Item Number, uh, Nine on September 17, 2019 was to consider the various trail improvement options and if the design continues to consider increase to the design and environmental budget. However, in addition to the item on the agenda, the City Council decided to do an out-of-cycle mid-year budget allocation of $2.2 million for construction of the trail, which was not in the council agenda. As per the Brown Act, no action or discussion may occur on items or subjects not listed on posted agenda, Section 54954 dot 2A2. However, the City Council did a budget allocation of $2.2 million for construction of the trail. That's illegitimate and that was not part of the Agenda Item Number Nine, a violation of the Brown Act. The members of the public, including me, were denied the right to speak or comment on this item, out-of-cycle budget item. I was disappointed that this happened under the watch of the new city council and even the attorney. You know, the council that was elected to ensure proper processes are followed by the city of Cupertino. Moreover, the CIP project was not reviewed by the Planning Commission for consistency with the general plan, which is required per municipal code and as per the direction of the council that was done in 2019. I have submitted many comments on the ISMND document indicating that the city has not done proper analysis on several categories, including noise, um, aesthetic impact, safety issue on Blaney Crossing, impact to 17 trees on the Library Field, et cetera, that need to be completed and included in the MND plan, not done afterwards, before it is approved by the council. In addition, the mitigation measures in front of La Zanola Lane, Lamar Drive and other parts of the trail should be completed before the JUA and land use agreement because these measures would impact the JU and, you know, LUA. And also, the land use agreement has not been reviewed by Parks and Rec Commission. The last thing is the real value of the unpaid pedestrian path that cannot be designated as a bicycle facility, either as Class 1, 2, 3 or 4 by the Caltrans Highway Design Manual. It is questionable whether there exists, you know, multiple on-street paid pedestrian facilities are already there and, uh, it is parallel to this proposed trail. It is not the best use of the taxpayer funds when the city is trapped for funding due to the unprecedented economic situation due to the COVID-19. And I request the council to take a hard look and postpone the initiation of this non-essential path till the economic situation improves. Meanwhile, that gives the city staff the time and opportunity to work with the residents to incorporate mitigating elements to the trail design to address the residents' concern. As for the general plan, addressing the privacy, security, noise issues should take priority over other issues when initiating projects in established neighborhood. And I would like that city council to really, you know, follow that. Thank you.
All right, great. Uh, next is Gary Wong. Welcome, Gary. What? You there? Let me try to unmute you. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, got you. Okay, I'll reset the timer.
Yes, I have several slides that I'd like to go over with the council. Uh, this is addressing the land swap between Wilson Park and the city and Valley Water. Next slide, please. Uh, contrary to what has been disclosed today, uh, the land swap is not, uh, for like amount of square footage. And if you look at the Resolution Attachment K, it says the ballpark field encroaches 2,710 feet, not 4,715, so it is not a like exchange. So I think the council should inquire, why are we giving more land to Valley Water, 74% more? And why is parkland less valuable than an access road? And then, because of this differential, there should be an appraisal. And then, why is there no concurrence from Accounting Department, Parks and Rec? There's no checks and balance. There is no fairness opinion that this swap is fair to the city of Cupertino. Next slide, please. So, uh, city staff and council have a fiduciary responsibility to care for the assets of the community. So what is the value of this land swap? There is no cash exchange. Any value, value differential should be included in the Regnar Creek capital budget. It's silent on what maintenance and operating costs will change because of this land swap. And how does the city proceed without knowing the value of this land? And why is this land swap buried in Item 25, Section K? This should be a separate item and not part of an environmental review. So, and lastly, city accounting and finance policy seems to be silent on procedures for such transactions and these should be updated for due diligence, disclosure and approval. Next slide. So I think it's premature for the council to approve this land swap until an appraisal is completed. Uh, the council should not approve the land swap until there is a satisfactory answer as to why the city is not swapping a light amount of square footage but offering 74% more land. The city should not approve the land swap without the concurrence of Parks and Recreation Committee and analysis by the accounting. There, there should be checks and balances because right now it looks like everybody missed this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Gary. Uh, next we have Leana Crabtree. Welcome, Leana.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I just.
Okay, can, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we got you. Okay.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much, council. I really appreciate all the eloquent comments of all the prior speakers. I have just two points. I agree with Peggy Griffin's comment related to, um, you know, the, the clipping of, uh, Library Field right there. You know, those, those trees are just seven and eight feet away from, um, an existing sidewalk. And, uh, I, it's, when you look at those trees and you look at the roots and you look at how the land is raised, uh, relative to the sidewalk, it just really seems improbable that you would be able to expand, uh, that sidewalk area to this 10-foot width without damaging those trees. And it just seems extremely unnecessary to do that. And I am, one, one comment, uh, that I would like to bring up is, uh, something that Peggy Griffin reminded me of and that is that there's actually other opportunities for people who are coming to the library to access the trail. Um, you know, right there at the area where the book drop is, you turn around 180 degrees from where the current book drop is and, um, you know, there's, there's opening there. Uh, if, if the area were opened as trail, it would be possible to, you know, change that parking lot a little bit and people could come in and out, uh, to Civic Center Plaza, Civic Center Plaza at that point. You know, we would need to be considered a secure crossings, but certainly these are possible options. And I believe the Library Commission has already offered some suggestions about how you might consider reconfiguring that parking lot space. Um, and then just a comment about Library Field and its status. Um, the Library Commission did consider, uh, and has already been on record as supporting the idea of Library Field as a park and preserving it as a three-acre park. Um, when we had our May Library Commission meeting, we were told by staff that actually we didn't have any purview over Library Field. That was part of Parks and Rec. But it's actually not a park. It's actually not a trail. And now, as it turns out, it's Civic Center Plaza. And I take exception to the fact that you have established a parcel of land that you basically said have, it has tremendous public value and appreciation, but yet, um, has no, no group that is allowed to advocate for it or rather, an inappropriate group. If, if it's not a park, then why does Park and Recs have, have purview over deciding its fate or making recommendations, but yet Library Commission is silenced? And I, I really encourage you to consider how this parcel of land is used, this Library Field. When you start encroaching this trail, you are limiting the shade use of people who come and use this park all the time. There are people setting up picnics there as they watch their children play sports, all kinds of things. And now it's so close to the proximity of people, uh, you know, crossing on the wrong side of the road in, in half the cases to, for, for really no benefit. And, and I really urge you to please, whatever you do, this part of the trail was not part of the individual environmental, um, study. It, it, it really doesn't belong here and please, please preserve this area as a park. Um, the community needs a park. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Leana. Next we have, um, uh, Jiyoung Yi, welcome.
Hi, uh, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, I, uh, I'm a resident on Lamar Drive and I recommend, I, I urge the city council to not approve, approve the MND because it is a flood. I, I, recently I was working at home and I was surprised to see a few young strangers casually and talking, walking and walking on the trail, even if it is publicly not open yet and behind my, uh, my backyard. What I was surprised further was that how much I could hear them from my room, not from my backyard, facing the, um, and facing the trail with my, when my, when I have my windows open. The noise was high enough for me to catch my attention while I was working on computer and I could hear them how, what they are talking about. This also means on, encompassly that they could also, that any pedestrians could hear us if we are talking, when we talk in our rooms, if we leave our windows open. It's, I'm not talking about when we are, uh, talking on the backyard either. So the MND that, uh, dismisses the noise impact to the residents, but it definitely is a flood. It, I mean, with my real, real-world experience, that the noise and the loss of privacy that the residents has to suffer is real and severe. Unless we get better mitigation, either by sound wall or better, uh, noise protection material. And also, uh, homeless encampment is a really, uh, big concern for us as well. But the only response that we get from the city officer is that the homeless would not come if the people can see them. But that argument has been proven to be wrong. They're had, they are, they are staying near the 280 entrance for multiple months and the city has been kept on failing to relocate them away. The best strategy always is a prevention and we need to close the gates every night and enforce everyone to leave before the gates are closed. But the city, we discussed this matter in, through many channels to the city, but we have not heard any progress on that. So, uh, I understand the, all the additional protection requires more budget. So either the council to allocate additional budget and direct the city to provide the necessary mitigations because the, the protecting the citizens is the duty of the city and council. If the council cannot do that, or if the city doesn't have enough budget, especially because of this COVID-19 situation, then this RCT project has to be postponed until the city gets enough, uh, revenue to support all these mitigations to the residents. Um, otherwise, the, the suffering that the residents has to go through would be too great uh, for, um, the others' benefit. So in summary, I urge the city to disprove the flawed MND and also the city has to consider seriously to, uh, postpone this RCT construction unless the city is ready to provide all the necessary protection to the, uh, impacted residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next I have caller 6134. Welcome.
Yes, Mayor, I don't know if, uh, you can hear me. This is Brenda Boyle and I may not have come in.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we hear, we hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just have a couple of questions. Um, first off, um, the comment that Seema made, um, about the petition, I have heard that there are some issues in terms of validity of signatures on that petition that they may not be representative completely of Cupertino residents. So I would caution the council and those that are evaluating this that those petitions, um, be looked at. But secondly, um, you know, I, I'm retired HP. Um, I worked at home for many, many years prior to, um, my retirement and, and I can personally attest to some noise and this is pre-COVID-19. Um, now that we have COVID-19, um, things are even, um, louder because there's a lot more people that never used to exercise that are exercising. So while I can appreciate that we, you know, we have a need for additional space, um, you know, we're talking about a drainage ditch that, uh, that is adjacent to a creek. We're really not talking about a legitimate, beautiful path that we would be creating. More importantly, I was one of the people that initiated concern about the safety. Um, so when we're doing the safety review, I don't know if it's been considered about, uh, appropriate enhancement to the crosswalks that are already in place at Rodriguez and Blaney as opposed to an un-inherited crosswalk that would be just beyond Lamar Drive where drivers, uh, you know, are already speeding and would actually create an increased risk. Lastly, I don't know if anybody from City Council or on this design team has been out to actually evaluate the short path going into Creekside Park. There is not social distancing that is occurring on that path. In fact, it is quite the opposite. So I'm concerned about the social distancing, whether that is a temporary requirement or something that we have to put in as part of a mitigation. I would just like to request some additional consideration regarding that. Thank you.
You're on mute, sir.
All right. Oh, I see Seema has her hand raised again, but sorry, you've already spoken. Uh, I understand why you want to respond, but I think we all. I understand why you want to respond, but I think we all know what the facts are.
Mr. Mayor, I also have three emails to read.
Oh, sure. Okay, go ahead.
First one is from Benifer de Stor.
Benifer, yeah.
Dear City Council members, this comment is regarding a message that went out today to the members of an advocacy group led by one of the city's bike ped commissioners. In the message, the commissioner encourages members to write emails to the council by explicitly naming private residents living along the creek who had reached out to the city council to seek protections. In the past, the homes of these residents living on the trail were mapped and circulating among the members of that group by this very commissioner. Targeted messages inciting members against private residents from organized advocacy groups demonstrate what we are up against and why we need the city to ensure that privacy and safety of the residents impacted by this project is protected by providing a concrete wall separating the homes from the trail. The following is an excerpt from the message that was sent by this group earlier in the evening to its members. The vote is tonight on Ragnar Creek Trail. We just checked, and there are over 10 letters from anti-trailers. Elango Ganga has four written letters, BG, his wife, Benifer de Stor, two people on De Palma Lane, Farley Aberg, and several more. There is not a single letter in support of the trail. We need your help. Please take five minutes and send a quick email to citycouncil@cortina.org expressing your support for the trail. It has to get there before 6:30 PM tonight. All the best, Seema and Jennifer. Okay, that's that one. And the next is from Swati G. I reside on Lamar, which will be very close to the trail. I have indicated that I am very concerned with the noise and security impact. A wooden fence will not help with any noise impact. Can the city make resolving these resident issues a priority? Regards, Swati. Okay, and the last one is from Siraj Dalvi. As a resident of Lamar adjoining the proposed Ragnar Creek Trail, I feel defeated, defeated by the fact that the city council refuses to acknowledge the security and noise concerns that we raise, and defeated by the fact that the city keeps promising that they would work with residents towards a solution but fail to do so. The city believes that the trail will do a greater good, and I have made my peace with that fact. At this point, I am not opposed to building the trail, but please also listen to the resident concerns and address them. These are real concerns and are not being raised to derail this project. It is disappointing that the city is not caring at all about the impact to the residents who are within two feet of the trail. The city promised to work with me on noise-suppressing fence options, but COVID-19 situation has made them push out the meeting twice. I would urge the City Council members to solve their resident issues, security and noise, before moving ahead with any more decisions on this trail. I believe that this is a very reasonable request and would appreciate an appropriate response. Thanks, Siraj. And that's it.
Great, okay. Let's see, there's no more attendees to speak, so we'll bring it back to City Council. Who would like to go first? Maybe nobody has any comments on it. Rod, do you have anything?
Yeah, I appreciate there's still people that think that this is the worst thing since sliced bread, but honestly, you know, the land swap is a benefit to both parties. It's not about actually equal square feet. It's about access for maintenance. This is a trail that will be used by, I'm confident, lots of people, so I will move this item if you're ready for a motion.
Let's see, I don't see anyone else wishing, hold on, I have to go back to here. Oh, wait, I see. Let's see, Councilmember Chow, can you speak before we do? Do you have anything, Liang? Okay, I guess not. Okay, Councilmember Willie.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself.
Okay.
Yeah. So here.
And please confine it to the three items that we're talking about, not anything else.
Oh, wait, I can't find the window I want to share. So regarding the land swap, I see that there is, I wonder how come we, it seems it's possible to not, to make a more fair trade. It's because there are parts of the land that we are giving to them that's occupied by trees. And it seems that we are not cutting off those trees. So why can we keep those parts? And because the previous land that they own is irregular-shaped anyway, so why don't we reduce that so that it's more of an equal trade? So has that been considered? Oh, I think it's here. Yeah.
I can respond to that.
You can see on the screen right now, right?
Yeah, okay, go ahead and respond, David.
Yes, so I guess I'd like to start by correcting a misconception from one of our members of the public speakers, that the areas are not equal, when in fact, they are equal areas that are being exchanged. Both areas are 4,715 square feet. That area that we are giving to Valley Water and that area that Valley Water is giving to us, the area that the ball fields encroach into Valley Water property is about 2,700 square feet, but we are being given a piece of land that is greater than that, as you can see by that rectangular hatch.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that, okay.
Yes, and the reason for that, there's a couple of reasons. One is it allows us to include that little portion of the trail and the bridge abutment on the right side there of that parcel within the land that the city is receiving. And also, it allows us a little bit more flexibility in the future. If we were to define the area of land that we are receiving as kind of an exact outline of the ball field, then that doesn't allow us much flexibility in the future if the ball field were to change or to move or some other use were to be placed there. So by acquiring a piece of land that's a little bit more regular-shaped and a little bit larger than the outline of the ball field, it allows the city an additional amount of flexibility in the future. So the areas are exactly equal, and both the city's attorneys and Valley Waters have indicated that the value of the lands are equal. And therefore, that's the reason why we did not get appraisals for those properties.
And to be clear, this allows, this eliminates the need for those bridges on the trail, is that true?
We have one bridge that's going to provide trailhead.
Access, yeah.
Wilson Park, but because the maintenance ramp is being relocated to the north side of the creek there, we don't have to have two bridges to bypass the maintenance ramp where it is in its current location, as was part of our original proposal for the.
Yeah, thank you. This was a great idea, okay.
Okay, good. So it's good to know that it's really an equal swap. I don't know how the residents got a different information. And I noticed that this area, there are trees, but then only one of the tree would be cut, right?
That's correct.
So I suppose then it won't be too much visual impact to these residents that's close to their area? And then.
Yes, there's one non-protected tree that needs to be removed so that Valley Water is able to access the ramp that is going to be constructed there. And the city is planning on planting a replacement tree in the park.
Okay, so the new bridge would be here, right?
Yes.
And I think the question that people have always been wondering is how this bridge would be opened, or when the truck would go, it would be removed, put on the side, right?
That's correct. Yes, a crane will be placed in Wilson Park that will reach over and lift the crane off of its location and swing it around.
Lift the bridge.
And we do have, Roger, if you have a copy of that, maybe I can find it and share it. We have an exhibit that shows that layout.
Oh, how often does that have to be done?
Very rarely. There's no scheduled time currently where Valley Water anticipates that it would need to be done. And it would be once every few years, maybe, but it would be a very infrequent occurrence.
But I mean, this crane will use existing paths in Wilson Park to access the bridge, right? It will not need to create a new path, take out any trees?
That's correct. No trees will need to be removed. It'll use existing paths to the extent possible, and pads will be placed on the ground in order to, and there you go. We have a diagram that shows there the location of the crane in yellow, and then reaching over to pick up the bridge from the creek, and then it'll swing it around over the ball field and place it there to the northeast of the crane. It'll be located on a temporary pad so that there's no damage to the park from the operation.
Okay, that's good to know. Then another, okay, let me see, okay. So here is the notice for workshop. Actually, initially, Library Field was not included. As we can see here, annotated spotlight. So Library Field was, the path through Library Field wasn't included initially, and somehow it was added later. So I do wonder how, I think what Leena said makes sense. I think she was proposing maybe we should have an opening here? Because how many people would bike down here and back up and to the library? Likely, they'll just exit here and then bike through the parking lot, right?
We are planning on having an opening there.
So we will be having an opening here, right? So there will be some kind of path for people to go through. Then then why do we need, so naturally, there is a path going this way? And anyone coming from Montavista likely would be riding here and crossing Torrey and going to the library. So anyone who wants to use Ragnar Creek Trail likely would be going down here and then come back to here, right? Why do we need to create a bidirectional path over using the Library Field?
We're just attempting to create a direct link between the McClellan Road bike lanes and the path. People, human nature is to kind of take the shortest route between two points, whether you make it safe and convenient for them or not. So we wanted to try to make it as safe and convenient as possible, and we're providing that path to do so. And to kind of clear up another misconception, the path there isn't going through Library Field. It's proposed to be constructed adjacent to the back of the sidewalk along Pacifica, within the city street right-of-way, outside of the line of trees.
Ah, okay, because I thought someone said it was going to go between the trees.
It was originally planned to go between the trees, but because the trees are fairly close together, we decided it was better, best interest of the trees to put it behind the sidewalk, and I just have a wide, shared-use sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay. And the reason is we, I assume everyone who bikes should be used to biking adequacy, which educate, which means you don't always take the shortest route. You should take the safest style, the route that bikes are supposed to use, right? So why are we allowing them to, this is, it might be confusing when you will make accommodation here and not there, and then elsewhere, they are supposed to follow rules. This here, they don't have to. So how much advantage is there really to have this bidirectional path?
Can I interrupt? We're not really, this is not on the agenda. We only have three things on the agenda.
I'm concerned about safety in the mitigated declaration.
Okay.
By the way, I need to make a correction. The Environmental Review Committee was not supposed to recommend anything to the council for approval or not. We are supposed to only make the determination whether the project needs EIR or mitigating negative declaration was enough. So that was a determination we made. And because I'm on the council, Kitty was on the planning commission, so we are not supposed to make a recommendation for the body that we sit on. Okay, so I do have concern in terms of the track, since now that this is created, okay. I'll get the I do have concern about, we don't have any improvement in traffic here, which is Torrey and Pacifica. I suppose many people will be riding from McClellan through Pacifica, turn left, and going to the library here, right? And many of them, yes, maybe not many of them will be riding on this bidirectional path. But anyway, this intersection will be one that should be improved, but that's not included in the plan. And then another thing is here, this, I assume there will be an opening, go to Rodriguez. And many students are probably going to ride here if they are going to Lawson. Where are they going to go? Are they going to cross the street here and then right here and go up north? But then there is no crossing. And then I'm a little, I'm concerned that people will try to cross here, and that might create dangerous conditions. These are not studied in the mitigated negative declaration. We are expecting a lot, I hope, a lot more beginner bikers who will use this path, who are not used to a lot of face safety etiquette. And then they will be very safe when they are on the trail, I'm sure, but when they're, they don't, it's not possible they live right next to the trail, right? So they will be riding to the trail and from the trail to their home, and this is where accidents might happen, is going onto the trail. So what are we doing here? Or do we have any mitigation here and there, and then like here at the end? And also, I think at the other end is the field, leading to Cupertino High from Creekside Park. More people will be taking that path, and I hope that there will be more emphasis on improving that as part of this project. By the time it's done, do we have plan to improving all these points that might might have more bikers you've seen?
At, where the trail terminates at East Estates, which is your circle there on the right, we are putting a a speed table and a mid-block crosswalk and a flashing beacon, a pedestrian-actuated flashing beacon to cross over to the Creekside Park path. We have not planned to do anything at the, at that location where the trail intersects or kind of hits Rodriguez. We are having a trailhead there. We are not anticipating putting a mid-block crossing at that location. We can monitor that after the trail opens, and if we see that there are issues, we can address them either with providing some kind of a protection. And if we see that there are issues, we can address them either with providing some kind of a protected crossing or closing off that access as a trailhead. Down at Torrey and Pacifica, we have not recommended any improvements. There is a crosswalk there currently. So there is marked crossing at that location.
There is crosswalk, I think, on this side, right, on this side?
It's on the east side.
Not this side. So a biker going north will have to cross, walk their bike through two crosswalks and then ride north?
No, the crosswalk is on the east side of the intersection.
On the east side of the intersection? Oh, okay, then that's fine. And then this is another area that might be dangerous. I'm assuming people will be going to Eaton. And then people riding here will try to cross again. So these are things that I I worry about. That the way we need to... That this mitigated declaration did not look at traffic safety sufficiently. Okay. And another thing that raised by many of the residents is noise. This mitigated decoration only estimated the noise from the middle of the trail, which is six feet from the wall of the resident. But if you are on a bike trail, usually you will be walking on the side of the trail. That will be one or two feet away from the residence wall and not six feet. So that means the noise measure is not quite exactly how people will hear because it's measured from the middle of the trail. And also, it's averaged across like many hours. I don't know. It's... Yeah, so I think I did approve the project at the time. And then, but then the next day I realized I didn't know. I didn't... It didn't register that Darcy's proposal, Darcy's motion included a funding allocation. Maybe it was too late, maybe I don't know. Because I was at that day prepared to discuss options for the trail, to move forward with the design. But I was not prepared to make an allocation. Next day, I called the Darcy to confirm whether the motion included a funding allocation or not. He said yes. I didn't realize that. And the residents, I think, made a good point because the agenda item, the agenda description, did not include funding. The agenda description was only about option. As a result, residents were not given opportunity to comment on the funding or comment on the funding required for mitigation. So we... Yeah, so I want to put it that out there. It's true. Our agenda item description was not accurate when incompatible to the motion that was made on September 17th, 2019. Okay. And then with regarding Library Field. So we are sure that there won't be impact on the trees, the root structure of the trees there, right?
Yes.
So they are going to be on one side. Then should be less impact on the field area. Okay, I think, yeah. That's all. And he, I think, I think Elango also made a good point that this true. This is a mid-year CIP budget adoption. So it's supposed to be... It didn't follow the normal CIP budget adoption process so that the planning commission can check for general plan consistency. That's... Well, that's why it's better. It's we should avoid making especially very significant media budget allocation. CIP projects should be all considered together so that their priorities could be considered together against each other. Okay.
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 Next, John, welcome.
Okay, I was just gonna ask Yang to keep her slide up there, just for a moment. Just for a moment, you know, that... You know, I truly believe we need to be respectful of all residents. And when there's a project that really doesn't have, you know, many concerns by residents, it can truly move faster. But when we do have projects that have a lot of concerns by residents, I do think we have to take the time and listen to them all and then make the right decision for the community. In addition, when a project winds up having significant changes, I do think that frequently it should come to the city council. If the change was more or less pretty benign, meaning it's in an area that's not seen, not used, and or cutting down a tree that's not normally visible and stuff, by all means, city staff make the right choices and move on. But when I'm seeing here tonight that conceivably now the path would include coming up the side of Library Field, it doesn't, you know, perhaps it's not going to be too significant. You know, the sidewalk is already there. But when I'm hearing staff say, "Well, we're considering or did consider going between the trees and impacting, you know, some of the area where residents would be sitting to view the ballgames on the field." I do think that that needs to be carefully looked at. Maybe staff does a good job, but if there are residents that have concerns, which we did hear some tonight, then I do think we need to be able to look at that and discuss it. We can't undo things once they're done. Once we make a decision, then, you know, it's virtually impossible to undo it. And so I think it's always good to be careful. And haste makes waste, even if this isn't all that fast. Okay, I've said that. Now, if I move to a slightly different topic, I am trying to be fairly quick. Did David's back up on the screen? Did David want to say something or is that by accident?
I think he was probably getting ready to try and clarify your statement. Clarify what's actually happening at Library Field.
Right, it's not between the trees, you said. So it's actually, right, the residents that are watching the game would not be sitting behind the trees anyway because they wouldn't be able to see. So, yeah, that was something that someone, one of the residents brought up. And I think, yeah, that was something the staff had not make clear. The long time ago, it was gonna go between the trees, but not now anymore.
Is there a map or a design that the staff can show visually so people are more comfortable?
Yeah, give me a moment and I can put a slide up.
Yeah, John, why don't you continue while he's doing the slide?
Okay, all I'm trying to say is that, you know, we need to be fair to all the residents and make sure that when there are going to be changes, that are going to be very visible. I mean, that's right out, you know, next to the sidewalk, the trees, the ball field. I do think that we need to be aware of that. Maybe city staff could simply inform us. But by all means, we need to be cautious. So if I move, if David's ready, feel free to interrupt me anytime. It's kind of convenient that David's there because then I can ask him to put back up the top view of the park where the land swap is because I do have a comment about that.
Give me a moment. I lost the connection from here.
Okay. And then my third question to touch on, that there's another location. Is it the same joint use agreement or are they truly separate? The Lozano Lane and the Palma Lane and the joint use agreement there?
We have existing joint use agreements for Lozano and for Palma. This one that we're bringing before you this evening will supersede those two. Basically, we're combining all of the trail into a single joint use agreement.
Okay, so it'd be nice, you know, I think a picture goes a thousand words, you know, does better than a thousand words. And when we have residents that are watching, I mean, we're more up to speed on this. I mean, we've walked the trail multiple times and things. But the residents that are watching and hearing that, you know, joint use agreements, land swaps, I think we need to be very detailed so that they understand also what we're talking about. And so when I did see the J U A in the text form and it said J U A apostrophe S, you know, again, I want to be sure that I clearly know. And now you're indicating that the existing ones are going to be combined with the new one. I do think we need to be very detailed in letting everybody know, you know, how this is playing out. So are you ready to... If you, you know, city manager said you might want to say something about the path along Library Field or not? I just saw that you, you happened to be on the camera and I wasn't sure if that was on purpose or by accident.
It's not letting me connect to the presentation. Hopefully, David or Gail, you can. I apologize for that, but I'm trying to establish the connection.
I was just trying to make the clarification, John, and repeat the clarification that David provided earlier that talked about the path that's to the south, I'm sorry. Yeah, to the south of Library Field, that it doesn't, you know, go in between the trees and it doesn't impair the roots, it's not going to damage the trees, and that it will take advantage of basically a dual-direction pathway just on the other side that will be constructed.
Yeah, and so, correct my memory if I'm wrong. I just don't remember that the trail went on the side of Library Field. I thought it ended when it reached the rear corner of the field on the previous discussions. And so if my memory is incorrect and it really did go up the side, whether it was between the trees or not between the trees. But I thought it previously, you know, what, six months ago, the trail line was only to the rear corner of the Library Field.
Yes, go ahead, David.
No, I'm sorry, Deb. So when you say up the side of Library Field, Councilmember Willie, are you referring to the east side of the field or the south side? Because along the east side, the trail is going to follow the creek.
Right, it's the south side.
Road that is...
Yeah, that was always there. We walked that on the workshop, you know, where we stopped at that rear corner of the field. And that was my recollection. Then the added one where it was a sidewalk, okay? No perceived changes to the sidewalk. But then what I think, you know, I heard described tonight though, that it would be widened so it would be bidirectional bike and ped. And to me, that was a little bit new.
So can everybody see what I'm sharing?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a drawing that shows what we are currently proposing along Pacifica.
But please differentiate that from what was conveyed six months ago and on the workshop. Again, if my memory isn't correct, you know, that's good that you're gonna remind me. But my recollection was it ended at that rear corner of Library Field. I just want to be sure we're...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Roger.
We might have lost Roger.
Yeah.
I don't see a crosswalk here on the east side, though.
That might be an old photograph.
Okay.
So what David said prior, John, is exactly right, which is, say, six or eight months ago, the path did not include this pathway here. But I think city staff was trying to make it so you could steer people to a safer path, route to the actual Rignot Creek Trail. Because if you kept it on the right side of the street coming down Pacifica on the right, people are not going to go down to the intersection and cross and then come back to get the trail. They'll just cross right in the middle of the trail, human nature.
Yeah, Deb, I'm sorry. My connection's been bad. But this was part of the design that went to council in September late last year. Yeah, this is not something that has been added or changed feature from what was authorized in September.
Was this picture shown at the council meeting? I don't remember.
No, this picture is more recent. This is part of the development towards the 100% design.
The Library Field part was not specifically mentioned. Maybe we didn't look at it, but then I didn't know about that until someone mentioned it in the past.
I can... I disagree. We have something that we showed for that council meeting for this section.
Okay, so we have arborists look at this that this won't hurt the trees?
We are going to have an arborist look at that as we proceed towards 100% design. We have some design concepts that have been used in similar situations with success, which we're anticipating doing a similar treatment here.
So I'm trying to understand who do you expect will use this?
Leon, can you please let John finish?
Okay.
So I wasn't trying to spend too much time on this. This discussion pertain to that when it appeared that there are still significant changes in an area that's going to be very visible, possibly used and stuff, and there are residents that bring it up, that we have a responsibility to be looking at that as opposed to saying, "Oh, this is now all in the city staff's position and should not be coming back to the city council anymore." And so I just want to, you know, I hear that. You know, I don't want to make things bigger than they should be, but we are here to listen to all the residents. And with these types of items, I do think we should be at least looking at it. If we decide that it's not needed for to be on the city council agenda, great, no problem. But I would feel bad if, after the fact, we were then seeing that, gee whiz, this does affect the ADA compliance or somebody did get hurt on their bicycle and we never did, so discuss it. So it'll come back to us at the 100%. So again, not to belabor the point tonight, just sit there and say that because this is a a concern, we should be looking at it at the 100%. Now, let's move past that. Again, I didn't want to spend too much time, just make sure. Not too much. If you could put the... If you could put the, put the land exchange back up. And, and so David's picture is a little bit larger than the one that Councilman Chow had. So I could go with either one.
Yeah, let me put, I'm looking for the land exchanged exhibit right now.
Slide 23, I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, there you go. And, and so when we saw this picture and I was looking at blue, I'm not, I, you know, I wasn't seeing that part of that blue, which is what you drew for Councilman Chow's picture, part of that blue stays city property. Or is that truly the, all the blue is now going to be Water District?
All of the blue is going to be Water District.
So they're gonna, they're gonna own right up to the, to the small fence?
This is Water District completely.
Yeah, and so that's why.
This is going to the, sorry about my penmanship. This is the city completely. And this is an existing easement that will remain for Valley Water access.
Okay, and, and so the, the comment that I would have on this is in, in your discussion with Councilman Chow and you said that you were kind of keeping, at least what it appeared to me, you were drawing a picture around some of the blue next to the, the field fence and saying that that would be, still be retained by the city to give us more flexibility. Should there ever be a need to slightly shift the field or whatever? Maybe the, the back, the home plate gets slightly changed or something and it, and it needs to be moved. But in this picture, the, the fence is the, the stopping point, no flexibility.
Oh, that flexibility was added by me. I was asking whether that would be better.
Oh, okay, so that wasn't David's pencil?
Yeah, it was mine.
Well, now this was, so if I can, if I can try to draw again. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, the intent was, you know, to go kind of beyond here to provide this flexibility and to include the bridge of the trail. Um, over here, we, we have to, we have to remain along the fence line because the Water District needs this room in order to do maneuvers with their equipment to access the ramp.
Well, I'm glad I'm looking at this.
Have as much flexibility on this, unfortunately, as we are being able to achieve on this side.
So, so I'm glad you're bringing up those details. Interesting, because where I was kind of going with this is, does this, does the Water District really say, wow, we want 4715 because we're giving you 4715? Or does the Water District say, as, as long as we have what we need to get our service done? And we're ha, you know, I don't know if they're saying this, but we're happy to help the community. And that ball field, you know, is an important community amenity there. And, and so if they were accommodating, is it possible some of the blue could be retained by the city for benches and stuff for people that wanted to watch the ballgame?
The intent is that that area in blue is going to continue to be maintained by the city and essentially function as, as parkland, kind of similar to the way it functions now. Even though it'll technically be owned by Valley Water. It'll function basically similarly to the trail, property owned by Valley Water, but is open for the public use. But to the, to the extent that when they need to access the ramp, they will be able to come in and enclose it to be able to get that kind of access, similar to the way that they will be allowed to do trail closure when they need to maintain the creek.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I, I haven't been a baseball, I'm a basketball person. So I'm just kind of trying to, to imagine that, you know, your picture or the other picture showed the, the nice shade trees that are in that region, which would indicate to me it would be great for spectators because they're not being hit by the hot sun during the entire duration of the game. Are there benches there or do people bring their lawn chairs and put them there? I don't know. I, I clearly know that the fence is there from the walkshops and you could see that, the fence there. So I don't know if people during a game are bringing their lawn chairs to take advantage of that. And so I was kind of questioning, you know, when the Valley Water people were walking with us and they said, you know, we, we're not allowing anything to, to be put that would obstruct us. And that kind of concerned me that if we gave all the blue to the Water District, that maybe that would prevent, you know, allowing residents to, or the city to put some, some movable benches there for spectators of the ballgame. Or if they would be accommodating and say, hey, all we really need to do is get enough blue for our truck, which you've kind of shown means the funny sliver slice. Okay, so, so it leaves me with the question. Did the Water District really want all of the blue? Or is there, it's nice to hear that the Parks and Rec is going to continue to maintain that area. So maybe, maybe it could still have park benches and stuff. And then maybe I don't need to ask the question about possibly retaining some of the blue as an advantage for spectators.
So with due respect to the time.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to continue this item to another meeting because this discussion is going so far, digressing so much.
Yeah. So what I would say, John, if we could cut this, this discussion off is probably you can put a bunch of temporary stuff there as long as it's movable and does not obstruct their truck.
Okay, so then let, okay, and so then let me just put out this last one. And that is, you know, I really believe we need full transparency. We need residents to be able to comment. When we're talking about doing a land exchange, I think it's something that should have been noticed to the residents, even though this maybe isn't all that impactful. But I want to be sure that if my position on city staff is resident engagement is extremely important. And when we're talking about a land exchange, we're never going to get that land back. And so had this, had this been notified on our city website that showing this picture, this land exchange, residents could have talked about whether they felt that that was an important spectator area or they had no concerns. And I'm thinking that that wasn't done. This is the first that the residents only found out, and tell me if I'm wrong. You know, residents only found out that there was a land exchange based on the agenda for tonight, like I did. But am I wrong about that?
We, we sent out e-notification to all the people that live along the creek last week, informing them about the, the entire Regner Creek agenda, including the land exchange. And this has also been discussed at, at many meetings that staff has had with Valley Water, which the minutes are, are posted monthly and notifications are sent out. So the people that are interested in the, in the creek project at least would, would be aware.
Okay, I, I still want to really stress that that's going to be a recurring.
Wilson Park are not aware. Users of Wilson Park.
Yes, and this, and this doesn't affect, this doesn't affect the use of the park. And, and again, it's beneficial to the city because currently the ball field encroaches onto, onto someone else's property, onto Valley Water property. So it's important for the city to.
John, can you finish up in the next minute, maybe?
Yeah, so.
Going way longer than anyone.
Well, this final point though, to me is the most important, but I think it's good to go in succession. So again, this will be a recurring thing, theme for me. On items like this, going forward, you know, resident notification on the city website with, you know, more than a week's notice so that they can truly comment and be aware of things before, you know, the city agenda comes out and they're left scrambling. Residents are the reason we're here. And we heard earlier tonight, in fact, the, the resident put the chart up. Residents are at the top, city council is next, then the city manager. We have a duty to make sure that the residents are able to see that we're giving some of the land of the city to the Water District and then the Water District is giving us some land for the ballpark. Again, that's going to be my recurring theme. I want to use this tonight so that it's not a surprise at future council meetings. Please make these types of, of information available to the residents as soon as possible. And, and when I hear, well, a week ago, to me, that's not enough. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. I, I do think it's a good, I do think it's a good exchange. The fact that the ball field has always been encroaching on the Water District and the Water District never made us remove the fence is a little bit surprising, but I think that's a good point. So, okay. Sorry about the, the extra time there. It's late for all of us.
Okay, Rod, you have not gone yet. Did you want to speak?
Let's see. Here we are, I get myself back together here.
I thought Rod went first.
Rod, I think it's Darcy who has.
Oh, it's Darcy that I think.
I, I spoke very briefly and I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward. So I'm willing to bring a motion whenever you're ready. I'm still ready, an hour and a half later.
One more important point to make.
Yeah, you can have two, two more minutes, go.
Okay, so I'll need to share the screen, uh, let me see. Okay. Okay. This was brought up by a pub, member of the public. This is the agenda item from September 17th. Reader agenda item, receiving information, report and presentation on Regner Creek Trail 65% design and revised estimated costs. Consideration of various trail improvement options, some of which may also include on-street bike in improvements and alternative trail alignments to the proposed trail, on-street alternative four and five. And if design of the proposed trail continues, consider an increase to the design and environmental budget. Recommended action. Receiving information and report and presentation on Regner Creek Trail 65% design and revised estimated costs. Trail improvement options and alternatives four and five to the proposed trail. And if the council continues to move forward with the design of the proposed trail, first, provide direction to staff regarding completion of design with the preferred trail improvement option A, B, C, D, E, R, F. And second, adopt draft resolution 19-115, amending the fiscal year 2019-20 capital improvement program budget to increase the budget to perform design and environmental clearance services from $538,000 to $813,000. This was the agenda item on September 17th, 2019. I'd like the city attorney to answer. Whether the decision made by the council that day to allocate $2.2 million to the project complies with the Brown Act?
Yes, it was in this, within the scope of what was noticed. The Brown Act requires a general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed.
Nowhere, nowhere this says we would allocate dollars for the project.
With all due respect, Councilmember Chow, for her question.
Please let her answer. And then, and then we're done. This is, we're no more, you know, we.
I feel like a lot of time, we don't want someone to talk about something. We say, oh, it's out of the scope. Then when we want something, we don't care if it's out of the scope, we go ahead and approve it.
And so the purpose of, of the general description is to alert members of the public about the items to be discussed. And here, the notice include providing direction to staff regarding preferred trail alignments and the staff and council selected option D, which the staff report included the construction cost estimates of 2.2 million. And so when council gave direction to proceed with option D, it also approved about budget, the budget allocation for that design. And it's worth noting that that, this project will come back before construction proceeds for council authorization to actually proceed with construction. And, and there'll be additional council authorization to proceed with construction at that time.
But the description did not mention we would allocate the full cost of the project.
I believe anybody who would have been interested in that would have had due notice to be at this meeting and.
Yeah, but then they would not be prepared to comment on it.
Presumed within selecting that design was that there would be a budget associated with it. You don't have to agree with me, Councilmember Chow, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
I would recommend that's bring this back as part of the CIP project so that we properly allocate this project.
Okay, Darcy, did you have anything?
And I would like the council to consider on better noise reduction walls. Right now, we are supporting only seven feet wooden walls. I think we do need to consider, the residents there already are accepting that this trail is happening. All they are asking is better noise reduction. I think we all then to consider some of this, especially in the trail access areas where more people will be coming in, I'll maybe speak here.
Okay, Darcy, do you have anything?
Yeah, what about that? What about that in the M and D with regard to noise mitigation? Was there, was there anything considered along those lines? Can someone who commissioned and informed the M and D let us know?
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. In defense of the M and D regarding noise, the question you have to ask is, is, does the project conform to what the thresholds of significance are? And make a determination of whether there's a significant impact or not. The noise study that was done, did take a look at that, established that the thresholds of significance are the city's noise standards from the city code. And they took measurements to determine what the ambient noise levels are and what the anticipated increases would be and how those, how those compare to the city standards. And in the end of the analysis, it was determined that they don't exceed the, the city standards. So they don't exceed the threshold and you can't determine that that's a significant impact. So from a SEQA standpoint, there's no significant impact. I think it's, there are some takeaways from the noise analysis that would be important to show. Roger, do you still have access to the presentation? I think we have a slide that will kind of illustrate the takeaway.
David, David will need to bring it up, Michael.
Yeah, Roger's connection, Michael, is not working very well.
Let me try it real quick. Let me try it real quick, um. Let's see.
Maybe um, while we're waiting for.
I'm sorry. Are you seeing the noise impact slide?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so these are the the points I would emphasize, um. Noise events due to the operation of the walking trail would meet the city code noise level limits at the property lines of the receiving land uses and that's part of the threshold. Of where you measure two. Um, compliance with the Muni Code would result in a less significant impact because those levels do not exceed the city threats, the three the cities um, limits. Which is the SEQA threshold. Um, the next one's a little more detail and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on how to define a CNEL, but it it's a twenty four hour average essentially. And considering that the trail is closed at night, um, it's a very conservative estimate what they came up with. Um, the third bullet point, the walk, proposed walking trail is not considered to be a substantial source of environmental noise, I mean, it just. Everybody acknowledges there will be noise, I mean, it's quiet now, when you have a trail now running past your your. Property fence, yes, you'll hear human voices, I mean, there will be an increase in noise level. Does it rise to a level of significance under SEQA? No, and the technical analysis that we provided demonstrates that very clearly. Um, and the last bullet point, um, audibility does not constitute significant environmental impact and that again goes back to the fact that. Because you hear something. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a significant impact under SEQA. Um, and that's, I mean, that's just a a common sense kind of thing, yes, you'll you'll hear noises you didn't hear before. There'll be people, there'll be human voices interacting as they pass by for a period of maybe a minute or, you know, a matter of seconds. And it'll happen periodically throughout the day. But when you look at the CNEL, the day night average overall. Um, it's not going to cause an increase that would exceed the city's thresholds, so from a SEQA standpoint, um, we've covered it the best we can, it's really a.
Okay, thank you, Darcy, did you have anything else before I go?
No, that was my question.
Okay, so, um. You know, we heard a lot tonight from residents and the legit, the one real concern that was legitimate that I heard was from the speaker. Was about noise on that section of the trail between Blaney and East Estates. And as uh, as we heard, there will be noise from people walking down the trail that was not there before and. Uh, that is true, um, I know at my house, I have four houses. Immediately over my fence and I can hear the people talking in their backyard, I can hear my backdoor neighbor's. Dog barking at all hours, my next door neighbor's kids playing in the yard and the pool. And my other next door neighbor talking in her garden rather loudly. Um, and then when they're walking in the sidewalk in front of my house, I can hear them. Talking outside and, you know, we live in a city with small lots and uh. Houses that are not set far back from each other and, you know, it it it's real, there will be noise that was not there. Before, well, technically it was there before because that section of the um. Section of the trail was open in the past, but it hasn't been open for a long time. And uh, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's been mitigated to the extent possible, I know. Um, you know, earlier in this whole thing, the city was uh, um, offering more extensive mitigation measures which um. The residents didn't want because they believed if they agreed to those measures, it would signal acquiescence to the trail being constructed. Uh, we are where we are now, uh, we have a responsibility to make our decisions based on factual information. And and to represent, you know, the residents and it, you know, I know there's, you know, the people that live whose houses back up to it don't want this trail. Um, but we have to consider what's best for all the residents in the city. And we passed this on a five zero vote after extensive study. And uh, so, you know, Rod, if you want to entertain a motion now, I think I think we are ready.
Thank you, Steve, um, yeah, I mean, I I appreciate that. Um, there are challenges with this, I think there's challenges with any change, any place in the city. And I think we do have to balance um, what we've heard. I think that um, I I mean, I'm very pleased with uh, the. Exchange that was, that's being proposed here, I mean, it's got to be. It's got to be easier for Valley Water to to do the maintenance from the north side. Um, I think that the. Making the the path flow well, uh, will will be terrific. Uh, there is noise for sure, but you know, we all have um, noises, I I back up to a a a school and. I, right now, it's a little actually disappointing to me that I don't hear much, um, I I'm used to hearing kids play soccer. Or softball and um, or running on the track and um. I think that's part of life in our community, I'm I'm quite convinced that uh, if if problems arise on this trail. Um, that uh, city staff will be on top of 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 handling those problems. Um, whatever they may be, uh, whether it's noise or other things. Um, I consider this actually an amenity and um, you know, we we can learn from. Other places in the city where we've introduced trails, I hope in time, the folks will come to. Who live nearby will come to appreciate this as as something that adds value, not subtracts, but I know. I know that's not currently the case for for many, so I think we do have to balance these things out, but I I'm um. I continue to be a supporter of this. So I will move that for the Regnar Creek Trail Project, we consider the recommendation of the environment panel. Consider the recommendation of the Environmental Review Committee. And adopt resolution number twenty dash zero five seven, adopting. Minute mitigated negative declaration for the Regnar Creek Trail Project. Adopting the mitigation measures and adopting the mitigation monitoring. Or reporting program and two, authorize the city manager to execute a joint use agreement with Santa Clara Valley Water District. Including a proposed minor land exchange at Wilson Park. And three, conduct a public hearing, determine that the proposed land exchange is in the public interest. And adopt resolution number twenty dash zero five eight, authorizing execution of a land exchange with the Santa Clara Valley Water District.
Okay, I will second that. Um, Madam City Clerk.
Can I add a friendly, um, can I add a friendly amendment?
You can try.
Can we include mitigation measures at Torrey and Pacifica to ensure the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists? Crossing on on that intersection.
I I I'm not, I don't know if that's within the scope of uh, what we're doing this evening, so I would look to staff.
That's a mitigation major for the part of.
I realize that, but I'm I'm asking staff at this point.
We we would look at those those areas as that once the trail was opened and if and if we had any any issues and thought that any improvements were needed, we we would, we would make those recommendations and do that.
Yeah, I I think I would prefer to have staff um, have uh, flexibility on if and when. Uh, additional measures are needed, I mean, I I have to say, you know, we like to really get into the weeds here. And try to design everything and study every detail. Um, I I would beg the council to uh, trust staff enough. Uh, to to sort out exactly what's needed and exactly what places, this is, this is their domain, they're they're the professionals and experts. I think we're better off letting them um, design this thing uh, and make additional improvements as as, you know, they're in. Based on their professional judgment, I'm sorry, it's one forty AM, so.
And and I do understand that current crosswalk there at Torrey and Pacifica. Um, cars rush through that all the time, there's no three way stop there, so I, you know. When this trail is completed and the connection to the uh. The protected bike lanes, we really need to do need to look into how to make that crossing safer.
Yeah, so if we wait until after this is completed, that's another six months of or a a whole year of no protection for people using the trail.
Well, I I, you know, Liang, honestly, I doubt that, I don't, I I don't think that staff is so malicious as to ignore, right? Um, uh, safety, I think they generally do a good job of it, I just, what I, what I do think is. Uh, you know, as responsible policymakers, we have to empower them to understand. A sequence of things that that get rolled out and get sat before us and then, you know, our job is to say yes or no. I don't think micromanaging uh, staff is the right way to go about.
This is not micromanaging.
The the micromanaging has got to stop.
Something that they didn't concede during.
Well, I'm sorry, but you know, my motion will stand.
All right. So, Madam City Clerk, can you, so Rod made the motion, I second it, can you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.